Crystal Sawyer White.
With that, we're going to close session until, we'll try and get out at seven. I'm very conscious of your time. So, conference with labor negotiator, agency negotiator, Jessica Romeo, employee organization, Antioch Education Association. We will be back.
Good evening and welcome to the February 26th board meeting in this little hot and sultry room. I apologize, they're working on the air conditioning. Recall to open session, we had nothing to report out from closed session, so if you could reestablish the quorum.
President Diane Gibson-Grey.
Here.
Vice President Mary Rocha.
Here.
Trustee Gary Hack.
I'm here.
Trustee Ellie Householder.
Present.
Thank you.
Trustee Crystal Sawyer White.
Present.
Apologies, Crystal. Uh, trustee Sawyer White.
Usually I do the flag salute myself. I'm gonna have the chief do it. Welcome to the room.
Yes, that's nice.
Okay, we have approval of the board minutes for the meeting on January 22nd, the special board meeting.
Madam Chair, I move approval.
You have approval.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, most passes five zero. We have the superintendent report.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
The minutes from the emergency meeting will be on there?
I'm sorry, it was the Board of Education meeting, it wasn't the emergency meeting.
Right, what are we gonna, is that the next?
The emergency media, or the special meeting will be at the next board meeting?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I thought somebody said special on this there.
No, no.
So, superintendent report.
Yes, good evening. So, I wanted to update the board. While we develop a more comprehensive plan for addressing safety that includes students, staff, and the community, I wanted to take a moment to share some interim measures that we are taking in light of the recent events that threaten the safety of students and staff at both Deer Valley and Antioch High School. For the foreseeable future, two extra site safety personnel will be on each campus along with two extra administrators. This morning, actually yesterday, we walked the Deer Valley campus to determine if additional cameras are needed to address safety concerns. As you'll recall, Antioch High's cameras were updated with measure B funds recently. We've also increased the lighting on campuses and are working to install gates to the main entrance of the Deer Valley parking lot. And I've also made in contact with Chief Brooks from Antioch Police Department, and he is working to see if there can be an increased presence on campus of the Antioch Police Department. Beginning next month, our Say Something app will go live so that everyone in the community will have a way to anonymously report information that can be routed to school personnel, law enforcement, et cetera. And additionally, as mentioned previously, the chief of police and I are working on a grant to add school resource officers to our schools as well as police presence at particular sporting events. And finally, we're going to do a perimeter assessment to determine if upgrades are needed and to secure our premises, and are working to develop a parent-community volunteer corps so that they can also help us. Finally, each school is gonna be addressing school safety at all of their ELAC meetings, their school site council meetings, and their PTSA meetings so that parents have an opportunity to provide input. And they'll also be meeting with the leadership teachers at both sites as well as students. And finally, I just want to address there, we received a few calls from individuals from Antioch High who were concerned about the information that was released regarding the possible weapon on campus, and then the subsequent information released by Antioch Police Department. So, I invited Chief Brooks here this evening. I don't think a lot of people understand that during an active criminal investigation, how communication works amongst the school district and the police department. So, Chief Brooks, if you wouldn't mind saying something about that, that'd be great.
So, good evening, board. I just wanted to touch on just a couple of things, and I had received information that there were some people who thought that it was misinformation that was given by the school in regards to the incident. And I'm talking about an incident that occurred at the Antioch High School actually a week ago today, if I'm correct. And the question had to do with the information that was provided by the school administrator, Principal Rocha, that there was a weapon involved. And some people questioned why the school district was not more specific regarding the fact that it was a gun. And what I wanted to explain, what a lot of people are unaware of, is that during the course of the incident and then the subsequent investigation, it wasn't known for a fact whether or not it actually was a gun. And so, for Principal Rocha to put out timely information that day, it would actually be irresponsible of him to say if it was or it wasn't, he was general in that it was a weapon because really that's what we can confirm, but there was no confirmation as to whether or not it was a real firearm or not. So, in an effort to get that information out timely, he actually had been in contact with our staff. And so, the information was actually part of a collaboration. He wanted to verify what in fact he could say and whether or not we could confirm at that time it was a real firearm, at which point we could not. So, the information that he drafted that day, the day of the incident, was accurate. Obviously, as with any criminal investigation through interviews, through video evidence, and through additional information gained from statements of victims, witnesses, and responsible parties, we learn additional information. So, obviously, with any criminal investigation, information changes as we conduct our investigation. And so, we have to be very careful in what information we present to make sure that it's as factually accurate as possible at the time we provide it. And so, I just wanted to share that information with the board and let them know that the information that Principal Rocha put out that day had actually been vetted through the police department and was accurate based on the information that he knew at the time of the posting.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Very, very appreciated. Thank you for coming this evening and for all your help and support.
And finally, I just want to say, pleased to announce that Antioch Unified School District was recently awarded two significant grants. One for our alternative pathways to education, and one is a middle school pathway grant, and the total of those is approximately 1.4 million. So, I look forward to, I know, very exciting. I look forward to sharing that work as we move forward. And finally, I just want to say congratulations to the Deer Valley High School Boys Basketball Team. They made it all the way to the finals. I'm not sure though, how'd they do last night? Anyone know if they won? Or is it tonight? It's tonight, okay, well, go Wolverines, so wish them all luck. That's my report for this evening, thank you.
Thank you very much. We move on to Cyper Representatives Report for EMO Grand Elementary School.
Good evening. I'm Janine Zaniga, very proud school principal from EMO Grand Elementary, and I'm very honored tonight to have you with me. My vice principal, Sue Molenbrock, our PTA president, Connie Padeo, PTA member Frank Deluna, three teachers in the house that I know of from EMO Grand, Pat McBee, Rachel Sherrier, and Shelley Lewis.
You guys should all go like this so we...
There you go, okay. And Sue's going to be my master of the remote tonight, okay. So, we are here to spotlight...
Can we turn one of those lights so we can see your...
Thank you. The 21st Century Learning Design going on at EMO Grand Elementary. And...
Yeah.
And tonight, board, we would like to share with you all of the highlights that are going on currently at EMO Grand. And here is Mr. Larson, because Mr. Larson just came to our school two weeks ago to present us with an achievement award that we're very proud of. And it's based on our success with the California Dashboard. The EMO Grant outcomes on the California Dashboard this year showed that between May of 2018 and 19, we increased our ELA and math achievement based on the S-Back. We also decreased our chronic absenteeism rate, and we significantly decreased our suspension rate. And we're particularly proud of our California Science Test results. This was the first year our fifth graders took the California Science Test online. And the proficiency rate across AUSD for fifth graders was 11.36 percent, and we hit 23.19 percent. So, we were very proud of that outcome in the first year. And we believe some of our success, or all of our success, we're not quite sure yet, is coming from our design of a 21st Century Learning model. And we were asked to talk about our stream piece tonight, but also, we're going to incorporate many of the other pieces, including our professional learning communities that are going on, and our multi-tiered systems of support to put it all together for you. So, in front of you, you should have a bright blue vision of our model at EMO Grand. And go back one for me, there we go, for the audience, thank you. So, what we'd like to highlight tonight for you first is stream. And we're gonna go ahead to the next slide. And stream is for us, science, technology, reading, engineering, the arts, which includes the humanities of social studies and visual performing arts, and math. And we have an interdisciplinary focus at Grant where teachers are building units of study to really integrate all of the content area grade level standards, make them interesting and relevant to our students, and helping our students to ask essential questions about the topic they're learning. We use Project Lead the Way, which is an online and hands-on program to teach the NGSS standards in science. Project Lead the Way really has a focus on technology and engineering, including coding programs. And our goal is to build our project-based learning, as we are a theater school into Black Diamond Middle School. So, we are working with them on that redesign project. So, let's see stream in action. So, here you see some kindergartners, and they're integrating art with writing. They're also involved with engineering as they're building projects, and they're using the iPads to code. And you can see it's integrated with reading and writing in their little booklets. In first through third grade, you'll see more examples of the iPads, and this is part of our project Lead the Way and the coding. You'll also see students who are building a town out of Legos, and that's integrated not only with social studies and math, but also reading and writing. Students had to engineer bridges in a classroom using just common everyday classroom materials. And we've got first through third graders who are also studying percussion linking to our music, our visual performing arts, as well as their reading, they're reading about percussion. So, a lot of integration. And in grades four and five, you see examples of students who are connecting California history with California geology and rock formations. You'll also see that we bring in our community resources. So, our fifth grade students are going out on the Brownlee Vessel and studying the environment and the ecosystem. And we're bringing in other community partners like the Leshar Center to integrate the art. But everything that they're doing is connected with the reading, writing, and math standards as well. As we look at sixth grade, we do have sixth grade at EMO Grand, we continue on with the environmental studies. We actually had a grant from CTA where the students were using iPads again and going out and studying the environment, and also connecting to reading, writing, and math. Also, students study ancient Greece and China in sixth grade. And so, you can see students doing research, reading and writing, working in teams, and actually having to engineer and build projects, moving towards the project-based learning. Writing is extremely important in 21st century, particularly information and persuasive writing, and the students have to prove that on the S-Back. But we are working very hard in Writer's Workshop to make sure students understand how to write at very, very deep levels. And you'll see older students, younger students, those are kindergartners down on the far left, who are busy doing informational writing. You'll also see an example of a professional learning community where teachers are studying students who are revising and editing their writing. We must have very close... We must have very close reading and deep critical thinking to be 21st century learners. And so you'll see examples here of teachers who are working in tier-one groups. So they bring students together in small groups based on their reading level, or maybe book clubs together, also, again, integrating to the content standards that they're studying. In particular, here, you'll see some science standards. We also have Mrs. McBee on the bottom right, teaching a phonics group as well. And a lot of deep application of the reading and writing through technology books and their writing. And visual performing arts, I mentioned earlier, but also, our music teacher tries to connect to the units of study that each grade level is currently working on, as well as music history. We use Kagan Cooperative Learning Structures so that students learn how to work in teams, which is required in this century. They need to work collaboratively and inquire. They need to use their academic vocabulary, and through these teams, they get a lot of social, emotional learning support. And Kagan Cooperative Learning Structures were started by Spencer Kagan. He actually researched cooperative learning in the early 1980s, and he was the first one to write about how we have to engage socially to actually learn and extend our learning. And Avid uses Kagan Cooperative Learning Structures as their collaborative structures. So we have a real connection there with Avid, and we have a connection with college and career planning. Our counselor took all of our fifth and sixth graders this year through the Cal Career Resource Network lessons, so that fifth graders are starting to think about what would they be interested in doing in the future. And one of their culminating activities, you'll see here, the child on the left was thinking about being a chemical engineer, or an athlete, or a dermatologist. The child on the right was more interested in the arts. And they had to study what salaries they might be able to gain from these occupations and what they would have to do in the future with their education to get there. And this was taken on by our counselor, and I want to give her, she couldn't be here tonight, but I wanted to give a real shout-out to her work. Now, this also connects us to Black Diamond Middle School's redesigned project. And underpinning all of the work we do are ongoing assessments and a data analysis cycle. So you'll see here that, of course, kids are being analyzed on their growth through iReady, but also, we do a lot of one-to-one assessments. Teachers actually sitting with their students and listening to them, in particular with reading and writing, and math as well. And we use an assessment wall for tracking their reading progress. So this is one grade level's assessment wall in the center. The students who are proficient and advanced at reading are on the right, and the below basic and basic students are on the left, and those are our targeted intervention students. That's what our cards help us to do. And so then we move into our tier-two and three interventions. So this is our multi-system of support. And here you'll see Ms. Rachel, who's behind me, working with a small group of students, and Ms. Connie, who's also an instructional aide at our site, working with a Kinder Phonics Group. And you'll also see one-to-one reading recovery students in first grade who get 30 minutes of tutorial every day from very well-trained literacy instructors. And we've been able to reduce our number of retentions and referrals to special education, so we're very proud about that. Big cost savings for the district. And students that get tier-one, two, and three interventions and still need support move into tier-four or our resource program. And also, we have three special day classes on our site, moderate to severe students, and Mrs. Lewis teaches one of those classes. So we have a lot of tier-four service on our site as well. Those students are very included in our school program, and we have many ways to show that our school is an inclusive school to our community. We work with PBIS. This is our year six. Toolbox is big on our campus, and our counselor continues to teach Toolbox across the school. We have many attendance incentives. You'll see our attendance bear on the left with Mrs. Lewis, and she's also our PBIS lead, so I've got to give her kudos for that. And with community service is big on our campus, and you can see that going on with the painting. So, another big shout-out to my Vice Principal, who I could not do all of this without. Thank you, Sue, for helping tonight with this. One more time, I just wanted to say, we have, I think, a very strong 21st Century Learning Model at Grant. We're proud of our outcomes, and we hope that we continue to see growth. And we're going to focus very hard on Stream and moving into the project-based learning. So thank you very much, and any questions?
Thank you.
There is a question.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Yes, it's a very good presentation. In regards to the intervention programs, are there, that's an entire, from K through...
Right, so we do have intervention K-six. Usually, by the time they're in the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, they've had a lot of tier-one, two, and three, and that's when we see them maybe moving into tier-four if they're a general education student.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Are you getting great?
Yes.
I was just hoping, or wondering if you can maybe break down the chart a little bit for us?
Surely.
I mean, I see that it's tiered support, but the little one on the bottom, the PLC, multi-tiered, if you can just break that down a little bit.
Break that down. I'm just going to steal one of them.
Yeah.
At the top of those triangles, PLC, our professional learning communities have to work together to determine our multiple-tiered system of support. So we're looking at all of the assessments, meeting together as teachers, and then deciding what type of differentiated instruction intervention they're going to get. Maybe a small group, more from their teacher, maybe a second small group from somebody like Connie, our wonderful instructional aide, or Ms. Rachel, our reading teacher. But we have to meet together and study this data at all times, so that's why that's all included there.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I was interested in your attendance, since that's been one of our topics. What did you, what magic things did you do?
Magic, yes.
Takes magic.
Yes. One of the things we did recently was Kindness Week, and we saw a huge increase in attendance during Kindness Week because, I'll let Sue Molenbrock tell you about the big prize. Yeah. There was a big prize involved, that big bear, yeah. So Ms. Dorothy, our school counselor, and Sue worked on it together and putting her on the spot.
Kind of.
Yeah. Sorry.
No, we always try to tie everything into being on time and being there at school, so we try to have a, an incentive. And there is, of course, around bears. We had a big bear, and the kids who were there every day on time for the week of Kindness Week were put into a drawing. And it happened that the winner was out of Mrs. Bannerman's SDC classroom, and it was her birthday when she won it. So it was a great incentive, and we talk about it every morning in our morning announcements about attendance and being there, so great fellows.
And it's a huge ADA boost, obviously, when we increase the attendance. And Ms. Dorothy, our school counselor, figured we probably raised about $1,000 in ADA that week, Kindness Week. So that's one of our pieces of magic, but we're on it all the time.
Do you keep track of the students that are having a problem in getting there?
Yes, ma'am. As a matter of fact, my attendance clerk is working many hours to make sure that we're not only keeping track of every child, that we don't hear why they're not at school, we see a chronic attendance problem, but we're, this week, for instance, we're doing SARS, the School Attendance Review Teams at the schools. We're very diligent in following through with as many as we can, and it does help, the more we can follow through. I was without an attendance clerk for three months this year, so we felt the difference.
Thank you very much. Your presentation was wonderful, and I love the idea of them grouping. You know, it sort of reminds me of pathways for the school, your style.
Yes, and I think that's where we're headed, if we can get that support to move the elementaries along with the Black Diamond redesign and then to the pathways.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming, all of you. I know it's out of your evening time, but thank you, and you may go. Feel free to leave. You don't have to stay. Stay if you want. So with that, we move on to public comments. We hear first from the public, and I'm going to read this every time, because not everybody comes here. "This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the Board of Education on any matter not on this agenda and over which the Board of Education has jurisdiction. Please state your name for the record, although legally, you don't have to, before addressing the Board." I have to insert that. "Please limit your comments to three minutes to allow others time to speak, and there will be a timer on the Board, and hopefully, it will have a sound tonight. The Board is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the Board does not respond to your comments at this time. However, the Board may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, ask a question for clarification, make an inquiry of staff for factual information, or refer the item to staff." So thank you. With that, we will start with Kathy Colecord as public, right? You must be retired now. Retired? Retired, Kathy? Yay, congratulations.
My name's Kathy Colecord. I am retired from the Antioch Unified School District. I'm here to share that I am completely appalled by Ellie's behavior on the Board. Every meeting you grandstand and are the victim of your own making. You call your fellow Board members' names and tantrum when you don't get your way. If you sense a vote isn't going to go your way, you grandstand and attempt to filibuster the meeting, taking time away from district business so that you can tantrum. Your behavior is destructive. Please stop or resign from your position on this Board so that we can start focusing on what needs to be the focus, students and their education. Thank you.
Thank you, Gil Marillo, followed by Cynthia Cathy. Good evening.
Chairman President, Trustees, Staff, Community. Gil Marillo, resident here since 2008. And ironically, I was going through some old emails, deleting some stuff. I came across an email that came from June of 2012, which was a speech that I presented here, and I may re-present the key areas of that speech. It's about safety. During that time, we had a lot of kids having problems, especially at Dallas Ranch. That time, my kids were there. We pulled them out, we put them to private schools. But the key thing is that this is an ongoing issue. Two Board members who are here, who are still housesees heard me that night. What I ask for is transparency. Many issues do not get reported back to the police department nor to the community. There's a lot of issues that go on at the schools. We, as a community, should know about those items. We in the community want to help to circumvent those issues happening. We're supposed to be one community, but it seems like we're divided. This Board continues to divide the North and the South on an ongoing basis, and that needs to stop. So I ask again for transparency. I know this is private information. I'm not asking for the parents, I'm not asking for the child's name, I'm asking for the incidents that are occurring, because these incidents, it's a behavioral issue that's happening by area. Could be gang-related, it could be social, it could be other areas. But this is a key thing, and it will help not only our community, but also our kids. Thank you very much. Now I yield my remaining time to the next speaker. Thank you.
Cynthia Cathy.
Good evening, Board. As I stand before you today, I am actually happy to hear that we have found some sort of solution after a tragic death of a child at Deer Valley High School. But I'm also saddened that it took this long for something to happen or something to be put in place, that a child had to lose his life in order for something to happen so all of our students in this district could be protected. That day, we literally, me and my kids, were getting out of the car at our home, and we literally heard the gunshots. I shrugged it off like it's nothing, because we always hear gunshots. But little did I know that somebody else was actually hurt. So it hurt me to know that somebody had to request an emergency board meeting for action to be taken place, for parents and people of the community to be heard. Sorry. I know that I want answers, and everybody else around us in this community want to answer, and I appreciate you guys for actually taking the step to answer questions. Come back here. But also, it is a shame that parents and the community had to come here and say that y'all needed to do something and do something now, and no one should have to ask or beg for an emergency meeting after such a tragedy. That should have been automatic. And yes, it is an issue for me and my children, as for, one day, they will either go to Antioch High School or Deer Valley High School. I will move so much to make sure that my children and children that they go to school with and children all around them will be protected. No other parent should have to bury their children after essentially dead. All schools should have security at all times. Just so everyone knows, that rocket ship is required to have security on campus during operation. Now, parents, we have to do better as parents. We do not check our children no more. We do not check book bags, go in their room, go through their stuff to see what they have going on. There's no way that a child should have enter our premises, let alone a school event, with an armed weapon. That's our children's safe place outside of home. So as a parent myself, although my children are only in kindergarten and first grade, I still have conversations with them in the school, before school, in the car, after school, in the car ride home. I check their bags that come through my door, because my children are my concern. So, parents, please, be all up in your children's business, no matter how old they are. If they in your house, under your roof, they are your responsibility, and that is your business. Thank you.
Thank you. Valma Wilson, followed by Julia M. O'Quoy. You're next, Julia.
Good evening, AUSD Board, Trustees, Superintendent Anello, Associate Superintendent Christine Ibarra, Deputy Superintendent Jessica Romeo, teachers, staff, community, and AUSD families. I am Valma Wilson. Let me be very clear. I am Valma Wilson, representing Valma Wilson. And there's a song that was in the famous movie by Aladdin entitled Speechless. And it says, "I won't be silenced. You can't keep me quiet. I won't tremble when you try it, for I know I won't go speechless." As we prepare to close out Black History Month, I want to honor one of my sheroes, Ms. Selena Sloan Butler. For those of you that don't know, Ms. Selena Sloan Butler was the African-American woman who founded the PTA. She was born with few material advantages, but through her determination and a sense of purpose, she was able to create institutions needed for her own and for every child's welfare, and in doing so, she served the needs of Black women and children nationwide. Under difficult circumstances, Selena put the resources she had to work. She received elementary school training from missionaries, and then, when she could not get her own child educated, created an elementary kindergarten program in the living room of her home. That was the most disheartening time for her, but she didn't let her voice still be silenced. She stood up for what was right. She stood up to make sure that her child and every child in her community was going to be educated, despite what they looked like, despite where they came from, and despite what the naysayers had to say. Enlisting support from other parents, she was able to organize the first Black Parent Teacher Association in the United States. I'm going to let that resonate, because so many people get so blinded by what PTA really stands for. Our model for PTA is every child, one voice. So it doesn't matter if you have a child at a school site. It doesn't matter if you don't even have children, you're just a community member wanting to be involved. Every child, one voice is paramount in the lives of the PTA. This is my desire, to advocate for all children. I don't have to be a parent of a child in other schools to see a need. My prayer is that we all get back to our love and to our passion for all children, for education, and to making sure that we're equitable in every area, that we include and receive, that every child receives the best of us.
Thank you. Julia M. O'Quaie, and if I, please restate it because I probably did it wrong, followed by Nicole Gardner. Good evening.
Good evening, Emeguque. Good evening, members of the boards, Superintendent Anello, and friends of the community. My name is Julia Emeguque. On January 31st of this year, my neighbor Jonathan Parker was killed at Deer Valley High School. He was a child of 16 years of age. I'd like to ask that the Deer Valley Administration to meet with all the students at the track and field so that together we can process the domestic terrorism that took place at Deer Valley on that date. And in this manner, we'll lead to a unified path of recovery. I also would like to ask that the entire city unifies in getting monetary donation funds to secure all schools, to pay for taller fences along school perimeters. Moreover, Deer Valley must have permanent booths located at key places throughout the schools and entrances, so more civilian student monitors are needed, not uniform officers or strategic corporation. Furthermore, Deer Valley needs plenty emotional, psychological, and psychiatric resources for students going through any kind of personal or family struggles. In addition, I would like to ask that as a united city, we gather funds to create a mural at Deer Valley that honors the life, memory, and legacy of our friend Jonathan Parker, accompanied along with a large circle of benches and arts material so that students can have an outlet to balance their lives by having a moment at the circle of Jonathan Parker. Consequently, I'd like to ask that all school activities, including graduation, take place during school hours and under a lot of student monitor supervision. Additionally, I'd like the school district to add classes that help our students learn basic social etiquette, self-respect, and basic de-escalation techniques to nullify violence. Furthermore, I'd like to ask that all interest school athletic activities to cease until we put complete security at Deer Valley and all schools. Subsequently, I'd like the school system to productively, positively, and humanly deal with disruptive students by giving them more outlets to become happier students and not just to keep them in the office or put them in the school to prison pipeline. In addition, we must stop handling our students with institutional racism by placing police officers and strategic corporation at the schools.
Thank you.
May Jonathan Parker rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Manager. Madam Chair, I just wanted to inform them about that comment.
Sure.
That I've been emailing with Stephanie, and I contacted the Governor's Office regarding funds to hire mental health.
Yeah, that's not on the agenda.
Well, I can still state that, that I'm working with her.
And you're probably in district reports, whatever. You said it, it's good.
I just wanted to reassure.
That's fine, thank you. Nicole Gardner, followed by Willie Mims.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Nicole Gardner. I have a 16-year-old son who attends Deer Valley High School. He knew the young boy, John John, who was killed at Deer Valley High School since they went to middle school together. I had to sit down and talk to my son and talk to him and ask him how he felt, if he felt safe at the school and how he felt about this tragedy that happened to someone he knew almost every day. I am afraid for my son, afraid for all the kids that go there. Something needs to be done to ensure our kids that this will not happen again. It seems like if money is the only issue when it comes to having officers there at our schools after these games to protect our children, then it looks like there needs to be some funding moved around or priorities need to be considered here. As a mother of two, I live for my boys. After this tragedy, dropping my son off at school has been stressful and concerning. That could have easily been my son that was murdered that night. I feel for and have kept the family of John John in my prayers. It's sad that they and other concerned parents such as myself had to wait for answers and are still waiting for answers as to how this even happened. After hearing that the board president did not have a meeting in a timely fashion to give answers to and hear the concerns from grieving parents, and after watching a video of the last meeting and seeing the board president basically give up and decided not to speak after the, sorry, after hearing the audience voice their opinions and say, "Fine, I just won't speak then," made me think that you are not a good leader for this board. Times like these show who real leaders are. Throwing a tantrum because you heard comments and interruptions from concerned parents was not the right thing to do. I didn't hear an apology, I didn't see you take accountability, I didn't hear you say, "We need to and will do better." I didn't hear anything that made me, as a parent, feel like you are taking steps to do any and everything you can to keep our children safe. Ms. Gray, you may be an amazing woman and may have done a lot of great things on the school board, but I find that during this tragedy, you have not been the leader that our community needs to come up with and make solutions to keep our children safe. Not reaching out to the family, to the school, to get answers, and doing everything you could to figure out what went wrong and what you all need to do to prevent this from happening again was what any parent would think that you would have done as a board president. Your actions have shown that you are not cut out to be the leader of this board. I am requesting that you resign. Thank you.
Thank you. Ariana Grady. And that will end the public portion comments unless somebody else has another speaker card. And if you do, please give it to Ms... Wait, wait, wait. Yes, excuse me. I called your name. I didn't see. You know what? You're an employee, right? Yeah, I put you on that employee. Sorry. Mr. Mims, I did it to you again, I turned it over too quickly. Will you be the last public comment, please? Or do you want me to reverse it? Okay, thank you so much. My apologies.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ariana Grady. I attend Antioch High School. I'm a junior at Antioch High School. A little bit about me, I'm really involved around school. I'm also in Student Gov. I'm the junior class vice president this year, and I also created my own club at Antioch High School called Be the Change, focuses on change of social injustice around the school. I came here to talk about on the incident on last Wednesday, the incident about the little firearm that went off, our weapon, our object, whatever we like to classify it as. I was doing ACT bubbling, which I did the ACT yesterday on Tuesday, which they had at the school. Mr. Roche had put together because he's on ACT board. We had did it, and it was an early Wednesday, and I got out of school, and it was like two or three periods before the school day ended, which is around 11 o'clock, 10:30. And I had got out, I was unaware of what happened just minutes before I had got out. All of my peers were unaware of what had happened. I went up to my program director's board, which is called Upper Bound, Dr. Bivins, and she made me aware of what was happening on campus. She made us be locked down inside of the school, in which our school was not even locked down, despite of the fact of the school, if the firearm, our weapon, our object was on campus or not, regardless, it should be, we should have been locked down. I don't understand why we weren't. I remember, I recall in middle school when there was an incident around the school and we had got on lockdown. So, I didn't understand if my peers had heard a gunshot go off in our school campus, regardless if the man ran, the boy, who's a freshman, who ran off of campus and decided to go away, regardless if the police, I'm sorry, was inside of, was investigating the campus of the day of. I think that we should have still been on lockdown. I don't feel safe at our school. I don't think any of my peers were safe at our school. I think that it's sad that Mr. Roche had to go and attack, I mean, not attack, sorry, had to go and give a message to our parents before we were even aware of what was going on at the school. I didn't know anything that was going on at the school between an email that my program director from Upper Bound, Dr. Bivins, like I said, had informed me on, and she locked me down inside of the College and Career Center in which she works in. I think that it's sad that we have to go through this, regardless of the fact that, like I said, if it was on campus or off campus, we still don't know the direct information. Well, I don't know at least, I'm not really educated on that. But I would just like to say that I don't feel safe at the school, and I just wanted to talk and be a voice, an advocate for the safety that's been going on because I went to the last emergency meeting last week, and it was really interesting and I really enjoyed it, but I would definitely be coming back to go more about these board meetings and have my voice be heard from Antioch, my own perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Apologies again, Mr. Mims.
Yes, Board President Gibson, no problem. To the board, Willie Mims, President Superintendent, Willie Mims, East County NAACP, and also Member of the Black Political Association. And I just wanted to say that I'm not here to bring any more criticism that you've already received. I just hope that you heard what people have said at the last board meeting and also at this board meeting, and hope to put some things in place to correct some mistakes that may have been made. The, I'm somewhat alarmed by the last speaker who said that there was no lockdown. I mean, that is insane. I mean, something just happened not long ago. So, why, you know, so what is your protocol for lockdown for any, for that kind of emergency? I know you have a protocol in place, perhaps the principal, whoever was in charge, but didn't know what was going on, or nobody knew anything. So, that's, you know, I think that, you know, there's some things that the board and the superintendent really need to take seriously because this is crazy. The other thing, I heard somebody mention Ms. Ho House's name, and you know, I'm here to tell her and anybody else that I support her 100%. I walk shoulder to shoulder with her. I stand with her. She's, my hand goes out to her because she's not afraid to bring up some of the major issues pertaining to this school district, and that's the issue of race and discriminatory factors, low test scores, suspensions of African-American students. So, she's not afraid to bring those up, and you should not be afraid to bring those up. You have, you have some, you have an item on your agenda tonight for the school site plans. Well, two of those schools I've selected, and I'm going to give you some data when they come up. So, that's my issue right there. I'm concerned about some of the cuts that you'll be making. And as you know, that there's a serious deficiency when it comes to the employment of African-American teachers, administrators, classified employees, a serious deficiency. So, I hope that your cuts really don't cut a hole in the number that you already have here, that's a minimum amount. At the last board meeting, I read a list of schools who had a substantial amount of African-American students on the campus, but zero teachers. I mean, 100, there was six schools, 100-plus Black students and zero teachers. So, I would hope that your cuts will take into consideration that you are, you are an organization that have to follow the law in terms of your hiring practices. And some of your hiring practices have a big question mark above them because I think that they're discriminatory in nature because just look at the superintendent's cabinet. Somebody don't look like me.
Thank you. Now, we move on to individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from district employees. We have Kenneth Kent first, followed by Mike Santos.
Hello, School Board. Kenneth Kent, fifth-grade teacher at Kimball Elementary. Thank you for having me. You've heard a lot of, "You messed up." This is going to be partly one more. I did want to say that you bungled the last meeting. I've been at the meetings previously. I heard your reasoning for the purpose of the special meeting, to set up and share with the public your school site safety plans and programs. I heard how you felt you were not allowed to discuss the ongoing investigation. I believe your intent. I understand it. However, on February 18th, the community needed to hear things from you. They needed to hear your empathy, they needed to hear your resolve. After that, you could have outlined what was in place at Deer Valley the night to protect students. You needed to acknowledge that it wasn't enough and commit to do better. After these things, you might have been possible to share your efforts towards building a restorative justice culture in our schools. Increased police and security presence is a short-term solution. Long-term and ultimately more effective solutions to build community supports around a restorative movement. I understand your intent, but you did not address what the community needed, and I am disappointed. I am more than disappointed, however, by trustee householder. To take focus off of Jonathan Parker's tragic death and how AUSD should respond and on to your personal agendas reprehensible. Even if you truly feel you have cause to call for resignation, that was not the time. You could have very easily called for it tonight. It seems that your purpose was to create conflict for your own personal gain. What you did took advantage of people's grief. You timed it to match the start of public comments. Your brother echoed your sentiments to try to set up a tone for the rest of the night and to give a grieving family an outlet and a target for their grief and pain. It was completely Machiavellian. It was a masterful political manipulation. You planned to take advantage of people's pain and grief at the precise moment it would have the biggest impact, and you were wrong. Spin this how you will. What you've showed at the last meeting was not in the public good. It was cold, it was calculating, and it was self-serving action. Thank you.
Mike Santos, followed by Mickey Bagger.
Good evening, President Diane Gibson-Grey, Board Trustees, Superintendent Anello. Mike Santos, regular board meeting attendee and a process observer. And I'm here tonight to actually speak my truth. I was extremely disturbed to see the online video of the special board meeting. What was intended to be a session focused on policy and preventative measures took a really ugly twist. Yes, there were some positives, but at the end of the day, the negativity quickly outweighed them. Prior to the meeting, I was hopeful that a proactive collegial discussion on school safety would occur. During the meeting, I expected everyone to demonstrate professional decorum while having critical conversations about a highly sensitive issue. Unfortunately, this is not what the general viewing public and I saw. What the video revealed was certain board members behaving badly. I would like to remind you what CSBA or the California School Boards Association says about the key elements of highly effective school boards. They include, number one, communicating a shared vision on student achievement; number two, acting with dignity and understanding the implications of demeanor and behavior; number three, operating openly with trust and integrity; and number four, governing in a dignified and professional manner, treating everyone with civility and respect. I was disappointed that those standards were not followed by certain, some board members. We, as an Antioch Unified School family, were all affected by the horrific tragedy that happened at Deer Valley High School. I would like to acknowledge board members, staff members, district staff, students, families, and community members who maintained their composure amidst outbursts and tirades. You have my utmost respect. For those who were unable to demonstrate proper decorum, I suggest that you review CSBA guidelines and use that as your plan for your own personal growth. In education, we often say, "We are all about the kids." If this is truly a core value for all of us, I ask certain board members to stop pointing fingers and laying blame. Put personal agendas and hidden messages aside to set a positive learning environment for our students. We cannot be divided but remain united in making a difference for our kids. I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity, for actually also giving me a safe space to express my thought because although you guys don't see it, I am sure I am not the only person hurting inside. Folks have different ways of expressing grief. Some people cope with it by being emotional, while others deal with it quietly. So, I sure hope, once again, that we can set our differences aside and focus on student learning. Thank you very much.
Mickey Bagger, followed by Monte Greg. Good evening.
Good evening, Board of Directors. I'm Ms. Anello. I'm, my name is Mickey Bagger, and I'm a resident of Antioch. I'm an employee here at the district, and I have three children who attended AUSD schools from start to finish. I met Ellie when she was employed by the district as a private contractor. My immediate impression was that she had an air of superiority. My immediate impression was that she had an air of superiority. On the occasions that we spoke directly, she was negative. She was negative in her comments about the district, making disparaging remarks about the management, including the directors. I did not vote for Ellie to become a trustee of this board because of my overall opinions about her, and I see that her superior attitude has not changed. Ellie started her trusteeship trying to make a name for herself by calling out others with no basis in fact and by using the position as a platform to make herself relevant. I am appalled at the behavior she has displayed by trashing the district, the superintendent, and the other trashies, trustees, excuse me, as well as using the pain and suffering from the recent tragedy this district has experienced to further her agenda. I think everyone would be better served if she would step down until she is mature enough to work with others in a cohesive and cooperative manner. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Monte Greg, followed by Josh Eisenbarger, Eisenberg-Barger, DA.
Good evening, Board of Directors, Stephanie, or, sorry, Superintendent Stephanie Anello and all of the participants that are in the audience tonight. I don't know, what I'm going to say doesn't really fit right now. There's sort of a gloom in the air. So now I don't know if I want to say what I was going to say, if I should just speak from my heart, but first and foremost, I would like to just say, rest in peace to the young man who died. His tragedy, it was heartbreaking. He's not at my school, but I am a principal in this district. I grieve differently, I guess, but I still grieve. I didn't come up here to talk about that or to talk about board members, because in a world where social media has often kept people from interaction, like face-to-face interaction, we are privileged to be part of a profession where emotions, intellect, and social interaction help to shape future generation mindsets. Every day, dedicated teachers and staff connect in the deepest ways with the hearts of our precious children. This is a world I have been a part of for 30 years. I'm going to retire soon, and I have five board meetings left, so I intend to speak at all five board meetings. It's a world of information, this is my last district I'll ever work in, my last opportunity to make a difference. In a world of information, sometimes, sorry, in 30 years of a world of information, sometimes struggles and a lot of love. Because of the love I have for my children, they are my children, all 6,000 of them by the time I finish, and for my teachers whom I love, tonight I'd like to extend an invitation to be face-to-face. Over 10 years, I've had the distinct privilege to serve at Mission Elementary. Some of you have visited and witnessed incredible teaching, amazing students and their work, musical productions, Black history and academic celebrations, music, we have a mission drumline, which is amazing, by the way. We have a choir, we have a coding club, and right now, we have a parent group of Middle Eastern parents who are not only learning a new language but a new culture, and we have tutoring. We're also a three-to-one technological Title I school, and every, and every teacher has a Surface Pro, which enables them to teach while walking around their classroom. I'm proud that my superintendent, Superintendent Anello, has often visited my school. The deputy superintendent, Jessica Romeo, assistant superintendent Christina Barr have also visited, as well as all of the directors in this district. They've come on and walked the halls of my campus. In addition, at least three of you have come to my school.
Thank you.
Okay. I hope you'll come. That was the end.
Josh Eisenbarger.
Good evening, School Board, Superintendent Anello, staff, students, parents, and community members. My name is Josh Eisenbarger, and I'm the president of Antioch Chapter 85 Classified School Employees Association. Now more than ever, it is imperative that we work together as a community to ensure the safety and education of every student in Antioch. Trustee Householder, I have some concerns that I would like to address in regards to last week's special school board meeting. I am disappointed that you exploited a tragic event in order to politically grandstand. I had hoped that you would refute the myth that classified staff and school administrators were both absent at that horrific night. I had hoped that you would ask the district what specific safety measures were in place and have been put in place to protect our students and our staff members. Instead, you chose to ask President Gibson-Grey for her resignation. I can say with certainty that we, as classified employees, may not care where you will be politically in 10 years, but we do care what you are doing now to work together to keep our children, mine included, educated and safe. Division is the enemy of forward progression. We, as classified employees, want to collaborate with our school board and our community for the betterment of our schools and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Neal, followed by Anna Hernandez.
Good evening, Board and District Leadership. Thanks for having this opportunity to speak. I'm going to read this, so I timed it, it's about two minutes and 45 seconds. So, "AUSD is not unlike any other district in the country. However, we are at a crossroads, a pivot point. We have an opportunity to be honest, transparent, and create a shift to demonstrate how much we care about our kids, their families, and those of us who care for them every day. Our opportunity is to respond to our individual and community pain by creating a safe and caring, caring schools where our children want to learn. The research is well documented and clear. Adverse child experiences, which is known as ACEs, and their effects is our new normal. We have more and more students with emotional needs who have less of an ability to express, regulate, and manage those needs. In the classrooms, more students require near constant attention while displaying greater emotional and physical volatility, as well as lacking the ability to develop healthy relationships. But there is good news. In neuroscience, there's a well-established concept called neuroplasticity. It is the brain's ability to change continuously throughout our lives. Therefore, the negative emotional impact of ACEs can be overcome through experiences in an environment that optimizes emotional connection, safety, trust, and belonging. Becoming a district whose mindset and approach is one of trauma-informed care and restorative practices offers this hope. We can build student capacity to become engaged learners. We can provide an approach with processes and interventions to assist our kids and their families in overcoming the impact of ACEs and develop lovers of learning. Currently, our district, in our district, there's a group of district leaders, teachers, and a consultant who are passionate, trained, and currently collaborating to bring this work to the forefront of our district. But we are, we all know it takes a village to raise a child. As our board, you have a unique and monumental opportunity to lead the shift towards this focus. As our board, you can reset our course through policy changes and the priorities you give to time and resources. There are two quotes that stand out to me as we are facing our district's current state. Albert Einstein said, 'Insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result.' And on my whiteboard at school, I have a quote from Jane Goodall. "What you do makes a difference, and you have to decide what kind of difference you want to make." As a community, as the community of Antioch, we all need to stand up, stop expecting others to change, stop blaming others, and admit, as an elder of the North American Lakota tribe said, "We are the ones we have been waiting for." It is past time for us all, no matter who we are in this community, to come together as Antioch because we are the ones we have been waiting for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Hernandez, followed by Celestina Perez. Just before you start, and before you start the timer, Donna Chadwick, I had you in the employee section, so you'll be last, if you don't mind. Thank you. Anna Hernandez, welcome.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Anello, staff, and the community. My name is Anna Hernandez, the secretary of our Antioch Chapter 85. Tonight I will be speaking on behalf of our CSA members. I would like to address member Householder. At the last board meeting, member Mary Rocha said, "It is sad that we are being divided when we should be working together and asking for our community's support to help prevent this from happening." Again, help from our community to come forward and help from our police department. You replied, "With all due respect, trustee Rocha, I do believe you are wrong." What? We shouldn't be working together? The community should not come forward and assist? We don't need help from the police? The statement alone leads our union members to believe that you are grandstanding for your political motives. You should be ashamed of yourself. We need to work together with everyone to create solutions that will support education, the safety of our students, and our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Celestina Perez.
Good evening, School Board Trustees and Superintendent Anello and our AUC family. My name is Celestina, and I am a mother of two K-through-12 AUSD sons. I am also an Antioch Unified Staff Member and an Antioch Community Member of 24 years. I felt compelled to come up here tonight to express some things. I recently had the pleasure of meeting with a handful of Deer Valley parents and several community leaders such as Superintendent Anello, Board President Gibson-Grey, and trustee Householder, Chief Brooks, Mayor Wright, Principal Oyabade, and Mr. Burgerhouse. We parents took it upon ourselves to initiate something intimate and start a conversation. Perhaps our small conversation could allow us to ask a few questions and use the information in a positive way to build on. The various community leaders answered the questions honestly and with integrity. It was a peaceful talk. They are just as passionate about our students and staff as we are. They recognize the parent perspective and concern. Some of the questions that were asked were regarding additional lighting, security, procedures, and communication at Deer Valley. It was a pleasure hearing that the ball is already rolling on many areas of improvement. I want to specifically thank Chief Brooks and Superintendent Anello for the information they could share with us, and that they are diligently working together on a plan to keep our evening events safe. Needless to say, we learned that changes don't happen overnight, and some things aren't as simple as they seem. Clearly, we all recognize that it does take, indeed take a village and money. Blame and negativity will never get us to our goal. I stand here as a person that wishes to see our students accomplish great things, and they will. I want to see those things in the news and on social media. A tragedy has occurred, a life was lost. I recognize that people are grieving and coping in all different ways, including my son, who was Jonathan's classmate. I just ask perhaps for a moment, and parents and community members, I am talking to you. Perhaps we can turn our anger, our posts, and our words into being productive instead. Instead of bashing the very people that are trying to do their jobs to be progressive, use your energy to be part of the solution. Research and suggest. Find out what it actually takes to have police presence at an event. Maybe realize that the quick and thorough response you demand may take a day or two because accurate information needs to be gathered. Here's a thought: Talk to your kids. Parent them. Stop pointing fingers and stop fighting with each other on and away from our schools. Get involved. The district, schools, and city aren't raising your kid. You are. With all of that said, I also truly hope that the census political agendas that we've had to witness with the board stops, what a show it has been. Because you know what? If we want our students and parents to stop the violence, be the example.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Time is in, and I'm sorry. Donna Chadwick. Thank you for being gracious.
Good evening. My name is Donna Chadwick. I wouldn't want your job for anything in the world. What you fielded, the questions here tonight are really hard. I'm here for one request and one request only. I'm a teacher at Dallas Ranch Middle School.
See, I thought you were a teacher.
And I'm requesting radios for all of our teachers on our campus. Safety's been an item that I've heard every person come up and talk about. In the last couple months, we've had two occasions on our campus where parents have come on to our campus trying to intervene for their children. We had one happen today, and it was a terrible situation. I felt unsafe, our staff felt unsafe, communication broke down, and there's two things I think we can do. I think we can do better with communication. And the one thing that we can do better with, with communication, is putting a handheld radio in the hands of every teacher on our campus. We have requested this for about three or four years. We brought it up with our principal, Bridget Spires, today. She said that she has come to the district. She has requested this, and she has been denied. I have no idea what a radio costs, but today we had parents on our campus. Bridget was wonderful. She was trying to field 15 people in her office. Our office staff didn't know what to do. They made a, a announcement, "It's a lockdown." I heard that, but not everybody heard it because we don't have good, good communication. And it was chaotic on our campus. I feel responsible for making sure our kids are safe and that I'm safe. I felt like I was in harm's way. Our PE teachers were in the back. They didn't even know that there was a lockdown. And so my request tonight, can we please put a handheld radio in the hand of every teacher at our school so that this will not happen again? To me, communication shouldn't be the issue. Safety shouldn't be the issue. To me, this seems pretty easy. I feel like we could have solved a lot of things on our campus today if we just had better communication. Can't hear on the intercom, can't hear, there was no communication. And, and the other thing is, I've never seen this situation where we have parents come on our campus to intervene in the lives of their kids. We had a parent that came on campus who tried to literally accost a 13-year-old student from something that happened at Rite Aid yesterday. This is not acceptable, and we're doing our best to try to solve this situation. So if we can get a radio in everybody's hands, that's my request tonight. Thank you for your time, and I really pray that God blesses you because you have a handful here. Thank you.
President Gibson-Grey.
Excuse me. There's a question.
I'm a little concerned here.
President Gibson-Grey, if I can comment real quick. Ms. Spires did call me this afternoon, and we put in an order for radios.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to know what exactly happened. Why did the parents have to? Was there altercation?
Well, I would refer you back to Bridget. All I know is what she told us during our meeting today, in our faculty meeting, and what she told us was, there was Rite Aids right up the street.
Right.
Our students go there frequently. Apparently, there was some altercation between two groups of students yesterday at the school, 3:30-ish, and it became a fight. I couldn't tell you all the details. It was very muddy to me.
Okay. I just want to know if it was a fight.
Yeah. And it was a follow-up. It happened on social media afterwards, and it filtered into our school the next morning.
Thank you. And we'll ask the superintendent to update us, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I made an error.
One more has come in from staff Tamara. It's either Dusty or Dasty. Dasty, thank you. Yes.
Hello, everyone. I'm here to finish Celestina's words. Every member of Antioch Unified Students, Staff, Parents, and Board, we are a team. Let's start acting like one. That is how it works in communities that thrive. Unfortunately, there are snakes in the grass. You must know who you are. The political agendas, the antics on social media, and misconstrued info given at a city council meeting, playing on emotions of a tragedy, asking for resignations left and right, really, stop it. Your priority was supposed to be the students of the district, remember? In closing, thank you for allowing me to speak. I wanted to offer this book titled The Five Dysfunctional, I'm sorry, Dysfunctions of a Team, to a couple of our board trustees tonight. Crystal and Ellie, these are for you. It's time to get back to focusing on the students. Thank you.
Thank you. This is public comment, so we're not allowed to respond, but I just want to say, I thank you all for coming. I'm listening, and you have been heard, and I'm sure, I'm, I'm not going to speak for my fellow board members, but that's what I feel. We'll move on to district reports, elementary after-school programs. All right, so, you know, before we get started, can we just take a five-minute break? We started a little bit early, and I would like to. So five minutes, 8:20 if we can, please.
...out of this after-school education and safety grant. And right now, six of our elementary schools, and for this presentation, we're focusing on elementary tonight. Our six of our elementary schools are Kimball, Marsh, Turner, Belshaw, Fremont, and Mission. Yes, feel free to applaud anytime, all the time. Thank you. I feel better. So, what's required of this grant and ultimately our programs are seen here in our program components. It is heavily focused on academic and literacy support, but there's also some really good things around recreation, skill building, student voice and leadership, which I think is one of the most interesting pieces of an after-school program, especially when you're talking about elementary kids. You would think the adults got to do all the work, but there's a lot of kid effort that's taking place here. And we're going to highlight that in just a few moments. It also includes a nutritional support aspect, and I'm going to go into that in these next few slides. With me tonight, as we've already talked about, my folks in the blue shirts. They represent a really wonderful partnership that we've had for eight years with Bay Area Community Resources. They run and support, working both with me, with site principals and site leaders, and the community to provide this really robust program. So with that, let's look a little bit at what those numbers are at the school sites. So here's just a quick table that shows you what our staffing amounts are for the number of adults that work with students and also the students that participate. We can go over those numbers, and we do as best we can. But the key criteria here is we have to have a 20-to-1 staff-to-student ratio. And again, that's about making sure that we nurture the program along and we provide the correct amount of safety and support for our students. All students in these schools are welcome to be a part of this. It comes on a first-come, first-served basis with the priority given to siblings, if you already have siblings in the program. And it especially looks for kids who are dealing with academic needs or social-emotional needs. And that can come through recommendations from teachers, from principals, and it can come from the parents coming in here. So we do our absolute best to service all our kids. We do have a waiting list and we're quick to put kids in because we know that sometimes our students are mobile, they leave the area, sometimes they go on to other activities. So we are constantly relooking at what our availability is to service students. And I want to get to the really good part, and then I'll follow up with some more information. But the good part is, we get a chance to really look at and highlight the individuals and especially our students. And tonight with this, I'm going to introduce Alexis. Alexis is the program coordinator at, or excuse me, program manager at Turner Elementary School. And she is responsible for doing some really amazing things. And tonight's highlighting her, but equal behind me are other individuals who do equally amazing things at the other school sites. So with that, I'm going to bring Alexis up, which I am proud to say is a Deer Valley graduate.
Oh, yay!
And you're going to find that many of our, many of our program folks are either residents of Antioch or graduates of, and community members here that kind of grew up and are giving back. And I think that's something that's so profound that we have individuals who say, "It's time to give back and let's serve in our community." So Alexis is going to talk a little bit about what she does at Turner and introduce our parents and our students here tonight. So Alexis?
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Anello. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm happy we have a fresh year right now. I've been at Turner Elementary. This is my second school year. I love what I do. The kids are awesome. I've been with BACR since 2017. I just want to talk to you a little bit about what we're doing at Turner Elementary. We are definitely trying to bridge that gap between school day and after-school program staff. It can be a little bit difficult, but we are making so much progress. One thing I would love to talk about is how we are partnering with our mindfulness coach at Turner Elementary, Mr. Scott. He is a wonderful artist. He actually does have an educational background in art. And he provides wonderful time, wonderful activities, great ideas for our kids in program. And we are able to have that school partnership and that school day staff connection with our students in after-school program. And I did also bring a couple of beautiful art products for you to see. These are oil pastels, and our students are creating these, all grades, first through fifth. Moving from there, I would also like to talk about our community partnership. We just recently had a wonderful STEM day called Phenomenal Physics. Thank you. We have a community partnership with the Lawrence Hall of Science. We work very closely with their educational department. They do also provide us monthly trainings with STEM and STEAM activities we can do with our programs. In this slide, you will see that we have all first through fifth graders participating in different gadgets and gadgets, all the way from motors to cell cells. And all learning everything from air components, all the way to learning how to turn on a light using solar panels, using all types of recycled materials as well. The kids had a really good time. You can see here, the staff are interacting with the kids. The kids are enjoying every minute of it. And this is something that we can offer and provide our students in after-school program. And we are bridging that gap with the school day and the community, and it's all working in our programs.
Thank you. The parents really appreciate it.
Yeah, no, they love it. I actually have a family here, a student in my program and also a family, her mother. They are here and I don't know if you want them to speak now, or yeah. And they can talk a little bit about why this is important and their experiences with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deer Valley High School grad.
So I have parent, this is Mother Carol, and this is daughter Malia. She is a fifth grader and they are Turner family.
Good evening. No problem. So my name is Carol Kelly and I am an Antioch resident for 13 years. And I have two children. My husband and I have two children, Malia, who's here, and her little brother, Cameron, who's also at Turner and also in the after-school program. Do you want to go first? She's a little nervous. She's not.
I don't blame you, honey. I'm a little nervous.
So let me know when you're ready to talk. Okay, so I wanted to, Alexis asked if I would just share my experience and I wanted to share a little bit about my family story. My husband and I are both commuting parents. And so after-school program has been critical for our family. And my children have been at Turner since TK, now in the fifth and the fourth grade. And last year, we actually had an unfortunate incident where they were previously cared for by my mother, their grandmother, and she had her second heart attack at the end of, she's okay, she's alive, amen. But she had her second health incident at the end of the school year. And Ms. Alexis was very welcoming to a rising need that wasn't present before. So I was suddenly in the need of support after-school. My husband and I were, again, commuting, so it was very essential that the program was available to accept my two children into after-school program. And since then, they have thrived, they have loved it there. I have full confidence in the staff at BACR. I feel comfortable knowing my children are there. I am appreciative of the structure that they receive there. My child would probably be at home with grandma on electronic. And so the idea that they are engaged in STEM and in arts, in leadership, I can tell that my children feel heard, they feel loved, they feel cared for. They get mad at me if I pick them up early, so they want to stay. So it really is a testament to the program and the structure and the care and respect that the staff at BACR are providing for the children at Turner. So just wanted to convey that in my appreciation. And if I had one thing to say, this is not about BACR, this is about after-school resources in the district. A lot of the community is commuting, as you all know, the profile of East County. And so the idea that 6:00 PM used to be late for after-care is no longer the idea. So it's, I got here just in time for 7:00 today, commuting from Oakland. So just a plug for after-school extension. Sorry, Alexis. Not that I want them to work longer, but the idea that more families who are commuting could, you could really benefit from a little bit longer care in the evening, so I'll say that. Malia, would you like to say anything? What do you like about after-school program?
You could just say hi if you want.
I like the staff.
Thank you.
I kind of questioned whether I should just stop at the presentation there, but we'll go on because I think there's some things that our parent highlighted that I do want to talk about, about possible expansion as we go forward. But I hope that you get an understanding for you on the board and for all of us in this room that there are some really great things that are happening here in their pockets of great success that are helping our family. And we want to continue to focus on those and to grow those and make sure that we're providing that that safe and nurturing environment for all. And so to get just a little bit more into the details about what BACR with...
Quick question. This is Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Oh, it is. It's been for two years? Oh, it has? Okay.
It's been longer. We've had this for...
Monday through Friday.
Probably, they've been with us for eight years. And probably 10 to 12, I'm not sure. Probably, they've been with us for eight years, and probably 10 to 12, I'm not sure. The total duration of this grant, but I think it's 2002, so we're looking at even longer with that.
And yeah, it used to be the recreation department, and then we... And then actually, my husband worked in Ambrose, and he recommended you guys for AUST. He's a recreation dude.
He did a good job. So the academic and literacy port, you saw one piece of that, which is STEAM, but let's talk about the overall day and what they do. So as you addressed here, they do go from the end of the day school bell, and they conclude at 6:00 PM every day. So that's part of the grant, is that duration from the end of the day till 6:00 PM. On most days are Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays, and Fridays. That's organized into that 45 minutes of homework support, 45 minutes of academic enrichment and interventions, and there's also 40 to 45 minutes of recreation time that the kids have. Especially at the end of the day, you want kids to be active, get that energy out. If they're sitting for too long, sometimes they get a little bit, well, sideways. So going into skill building, there's different pieces of this, and we'll, we'll talk more about the student voice and leadership, but there's a lot of cooperative work so that kids get an opportunity to build good trusting relationship with peers, with the support, and through the facilitation of program staff. So it is absolutely a great place to learn and grow for these kids. In here, the top picture, which I think is probably the best part of this presentation, is all the smiling, happy pictures of students really enjoying themselves. This top one is a physics assignment, so it's a balancing challenge, and they were supposed to go through and decide as a group how they were gonna balance this paper on top of this box. The other enrichment activities that you see throughout this, and this isn't at every site, but it is across all the sites here, have different pieces of this, performing arts. You saw the fine arts example that, that we displayed here on these boards. There's cooking clubs, there's nutritional programs that go on, leadership initiatives, STEAM you saw, and there's even a reading thing, and I have, I have to see this. I guess it's actually a park. You've got middle school boys and girls loving to read, which I think sounds like the coolest thing ever. I'm a little bit in disbelief, but there are pictures to the effect that it actually happened. So that's on the top, and that's one of my, that's one of my new experiences, so I hope to, and look forward to seeing that here soon. The voice and leadership, this, again, I think I've said it now three times, because it is that impressive for me. The staff allows the students to be able to have a voice. They get an opportunity to talk about things that are interested to them, how they're gonna build those projects, and staff facilitates and guides them through that. So at an early age, we want our students to have critical thinking skills, to have these organizational skills, because of what they're gonna do when they get into the workforce, isn't necessarily gonna be told step by step what to do. They're gonna have to think and be creative and solve a lot of problems, and this is a great way to reinforce what they're gonna need in life at an early stage, and help that to grow throughout their, their high school, their college, and into their work careers. What's also interesting is when these projects are completed, there's actually a reflection period. Students are, are brought into a, a situation where they're able to reflect on what they did with the guidance of the facilitators. And what it ultimately does, all of this together really helps to make this safe and supportive environments. And I absolutely love this picture. It just looks like he's having fun. I don't know if I can do the, the move, but it looks really cool in there. And, and what this speaks of is that not just that they're out there having a great time, but there's some cool community service events. So at Belshaw, for example, students actually came up with supporting the community and giving away food from the food bank. So they came up with the idea, they bag food, they are responsible for standing out in the front of the school and handing out food to families and, and being supportive. And I think that idea of service and of community, if we start at that early age, I think that can be really transformative in our community, and so we're growing learners to be responsible to everyone around them in their community. And again, just fantastic stuff. Nutrition, they're gonna get hungry. Kids get hungry, all that activity, all that thinking. So our nutritional support, our services program actually does feed them. So when they start the day, they're gonna get an entree, fruit, juice, or milk, and they get a snack by the end of the day. So what we understand about poverty sometimes is that families struggle to provide the, the correct nutrition and the proper nutrition. So at these schools, we're able to provide them breakfast, lunch, dinner, and snacks. We are really making sure that our students have all of the physical needs met to be successful throughout their school day. And not only that we do provide them food, but there's also, I think I talked about cooking clubs, there's get fit programs. So there is a focus on how kids are supposed to be healthy and how we can support them in that. And then the recreation, lots of good pictures. Kids are just having a blast. I, I just take back to my own childhood. This, this looks like a PE class, but you get to continue it after the end of the day too. That looks like it'd be so much fun. Where we're heading, and I think this is one of the other most important slides, is we recently met with some folks from the state to talk a little bit about our expanded learning programs and what the possibility of us of expanding it is. The changing nature of the Bay Area, you're seeing that environments that are further west of us are seeing an increase in incomes, and people of low income are moving more and more to the East Bay. In doing so, it changes the nature of the districts west of us and how much free and reduced lunch percentages they have, poverty percentages. So there is becoming more and more money available, and as we see changes in our demographic, we have an opportunity to request more funds. So right now, we're looking at in the fall to one, start requesting additional funding for our current schools. And it, you know, one of those, it's one of those things where they said, really, there's no reason why you shouldn't get it. So it's just a matter of going through the application process and working on it. So we're looking at expanding so we can get more students access to these programs. And then the next piece is, we have schools that would be eligible that have no funding right now through this grant. So we're gonna, again, extend that application, and with all, you know, good efforts and making sure we follow this process, we're looking at 2021 and 2022, the possibility of adding several elementary sites and middle school sites, and increasing these really good programs for our community. So with that, this is a short presentation on this. We wanted to highlight the really great things that are going on, but we also wanna be responsive to any questions that the board may have and any discussion about after-school programs, whether it's through this specific grant or other things, if you'd be available to, to help.
And Chair, great presentation. I'm glad to see what's going on in the after-school community. Is this for just Title I? Because my son was enrolled in Diablo Vista, and I really think we should consider funding for, is this Title I, elementary school?
It's not Title I, but they focus on low-income schools. So when we put in our application, we try to put in as many as we can, and then it's up to the discretion of those that are running the grant program whether they fund it. So when we look at schools with 70% or higher poverty, almost all of those schools get awarded this grant. Schools below that then become as an as-needed piece as funding permits. And, and that's about the extent of my knowledge right now, but I'm gonna learn more and, and work with, in partnership with the CDE representatives, and hopefully we can expand it to every elementary school and middle school.
Okay, we can keep that in mind, Diablo Vista. Even though my son's not there, it's not like I'm, I'm just, I know what's going on over there. Okay, and then number two, are you considering like computer tech, other districts, they're focusing on writing skills? You know, it seems to be an issue when they hit middle school. I don't see book reports, I don't see research papers. So maybe computer tech adding on to the after-school program?
Many of them use the technology that exists at the sites. What you might not have seen in here is our iReady program. Many of the, the students actually use the existing technology in the after-school program to develop that. And that is really about the coordination between the site and the program on how much technology is used. In terms of writing, I can, I don't have enough knowledge to know what we do with writing with the after-school program. I do know that we do capture that within the school day and go that, but I'm not sure about the partnership.
Right, my son's, he works on iReady, and there's no book reports, no research writing. So I think the foundation, the basics, especially picking out the book, they used to have that where you had the color coding for the grade levels, and if you didn't make it to the second grade or third grade, then you would build up on your grade level skills, and then a book report. He had a book report in fourth grade, now he's in sixth grade, no book report. So I'm just asking.
One thing just for you specifically, when you look at iReady, it does have different levels of reading. So once you take the diagnostic, it'll tell you about your level of reading, and it will use that same Lexile level, and it does code really well to what you're talking about, the stickers, which is the old AR system.
Yeah, AR.
There is a correlation that happens, and you can use that to be able to pull books off the shelf that are in that zone of proximal development. That's the language for AR. And then that helps them to get that stretch growth where they're reading and moving up, but yet not too challenged.
Okay, so, sorry, my last question. What about the access to the libraries? It's my understanding, we don't have enough library checks, and do they have access to sit in the library after-school? Or check out a book?
It depends on what the use permit is and what the, the nature of their program is. Some of the sites are able to use the library after-school, some of them have it at a home base. Many of them use portables or other classrooms, and the reason for that a lot of times is we wanna have a dedicated space. They have a lot of equipment. We don't want them going in and out of a regular teacher's, 'cause as you go into an elementary teacher's classroom, they have a lot of stuff. You add BACR stuff, all of a sudden, there's no room for the people in there. So a lot of times we do separate, because they have a lot of needs around that. So you saw recreation equipment, you see games, you see all sorts of other materials. So the grant itself does allow for extended hours and that type of work. And I can let program staff talk a little bit more about what they may or may not do.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One of them is, what happens with students, as you know, in disputes? Do you have a certain process? Do you have a, if they get upset with each other, is there something that you do?
Well, let me, let me ask, would either of you guys like to address what you do with disputes and how you work through that? Or do we not have disputes? We're a perfect program.
Nobody gets upset, yeah.
Did not happen. So I'm gonna introduce Christine Serna.
Thank you commuter mom, we appreciate this. I, I understand your early morning.
So Christine Serna is the director for the Antioch programs through BACR, and she's been around for a very long time, so I think she'd be best to, to address that for you.
Good evening. So we really promote problem solving with, with our students. All of us are not trained in restorative justice, however, we are aware of it. And some of us probably have, okay, some of them have had some training. So that's really where we go with that.
That's good. I mean, that's something that you're looking into, because there's always gonna be somebody upset with somebody else, and you've gotta have... And then the problem is that you just can't chew them out. The parent's not around. And the other thing is the parent requires or needs you to be there.
Correct.
And so we can't have this discipline eliminate the student.
We really promote positive and effective communication.
One more thing, just to let you know, you know, we never get presented at the fairgrounds, and they're always saying, well, the teachers don't even think about putting their artwork, but I saw that beautiful artwork.
You're talking about the Contra Costa Fair?
Yeah, Contra Costa Fair, and it's gonna be in May. It's always early. So that artwork would be beautiful if you just submit, and it's online. So I just, not only telling you for after-school people, but also our own district art people that they might consider putting our students in there. All the time when I go in there to see the art, it's, it's the students from the, over the hill, as we know.
Oh, okay, we will keep that in mind. Thank you.
Tracy Householder?
Thank you. Mr. Cannon, I just wanted to ask, are you overseeing this program now?
Yeah.
All the after-school?
Yeah, Ms. Mai, who was previously here and did it for years, she retired in the fall. And so I did my best to try to learn as much as possible, so there's a lot of growth for me personally this year in learning how to deal with this. I can tell you that we've, we've got a great relationship started, and we're getting to learn each other more and more about how we can really do some good work.
Well, thank you. This, I thought this presentation was really great, and thank you, BACR. This is amazing, and I, I'm really very hopeful. It's very positive. I appreciate it so much.
And also, oh, there's a few public comments, so please stay. But also, my husband being in recreation, I was a commuter wife, and so I really appreciate the programs where I didn't have to think about my child. It sounds cold, but when you're working, you need to be able to, to work. So thank you very much. We do have a couple of public comments. Julia? Julia, will you just say your name slowly for me? 'Cause, last name. Okay, I'll just call you Julia.
M. Go. Que.
M. Go. Que, okay.
Like Q, but...
You know, your E, I wasn't, thank you.
Dear members of the board and friends of the community, thank you for listening to me again. I had asked many times previously that children stay longer in the school. The ACES fund is not used fully well, because we shouldn't just focus on the learning and academics of the students and for just a few students to be benefited by the ACES fund. It should be used for all students at all schools, because students need a lot of play and social interaction amongst each other. Also, with this grant, students could be even be served dinner from 2:30 to 3:30. As you know, times are difficult, and most students don't eat dinner at home, because parents can't afford dinner. So instead of just serving a few, let's serve all students throughout pre-K to high school, or with the students still attending schools from 18 to 20 years old. In addition, the reason why I tell you that all students should stay longer in a school and have the benefits of this service is because it's easier and safer for parents and students, since most parents work and it's difficult to find a job that lets you out at 2:00 PM or 3:00 PM to pick up your child. In the same hand, again, children learn more through play and social interaction. They practice proper social skills. In addition, I personally have noticed that children rather an easy lecturing, personal, and humanly approach from a teacher than the iReady program, where they are actually unlearning and getting bored of the iReady program, or sometimes they just exit to play games, like some computer games, and it, it should just better be used to extend all the school day longer, like in every, every hour, give 15 minutes of recess to a student to go out, so that then we don't have to cram up with too much lecturing, because that's something that's stressing a lot of the students. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mims, I did not lose your card this time. Come on down.
Yeah, I just wanna have, you know, first of all, I wanna thank Mr. Cannon for his presentation. I thought it was quite well. And one of the questions I had is, pertains to the students themselves. So are, are these students being tracked, for example, when they first come into the program? And then at a certain period of time, to see how much progress they've made in terms of their education? See if they're at one point, at one spot when they first came in, and then somewhere else in the end. And also, how, how much, how much of an impact have this after-school program had on the, on the overall education of the students? Or the overall progress of the students in, in their classes? So I'm not sure if that's being tracked. The other thing is that, you know, in terms of, I heard him mention restorative justice. There are not too many people who understand what restorative justice is. If they, if they did, then we would not have all these dang suspensions around here. So I just wanna make sure I got that on the side. The, my last question is the staffing and the, the demographics of the staffing. So, you know, I see you have a wide range of diversity. So I would like to know if that's the same in terms of the staffing, does it reflect the students who they're working with every day? If I can get that answer, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So I don't know if the questions wanna be answered tonight or another time? Okay, direct it at this point. He may not have them at his fingertips. Will, will we get an answer to them?
I think the short is, your, your two questions, yes and yes. Yes, we track progress. Yes, they reflect the diversity of our student population.
And with that, thank you very much. A wonderful program, and off you may go. And I recognize you from many, I, I'm thinking you're classified when I saw you in the shirt. So you've been here a long time, and thank you everyone, especially the ones sitting in the back. Okay, with that, we will move on to consent items. Is there anything anybody wants to pull, discuss, table, et cetera?
There is a revision to 10G.
Of course, there always is. Anyone else?
Can we comment on that revision?
Huh?
Can we comment on that revision?
You can comment on a revision, yeah.
Okay. Leave of absence, we don't have to say the employee without pay? Would that be something we'd be notified in closed session, or?
No.
Not unless there was a need for the board to take some action, you wouldn't be notified, no. Sometimes employees take leaves of absence... Sometimes employees take leaves of absence for various reasons.
Oh, okay, it was in a reprimand, just checking. Okay, yes, I have Madam Chair some items to.
Do you want to poll or discuss?
Poll and discuss.
So poll?
Yeah, let's see, B is in baby. And it was Q is in queen.
Okay. And then you wanted to discuss without polling anything? Or just pull these items to vote separately?
To discuss.
Okay, to discuss. How about anybody else? I just have a comment on one, I want a ten E. I just want to call out and thank Jeff Atkins at DVHS and Anastasia De Roberts-Fay. Did I say it even halfway right? Thank you, say it again? I knew it was a beautiful name. ANIAC, hi, they both got printers from Donors Choose, so thank you very much. And, great, thank you. So since it's just going to be comments and we're not pulling the items, we'll go ahead and have a discussion on ten B. Trustee Crystal Sawyer-White?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So it's the PO number. One zero, I'm sorry, one eight zero one zero six nine. Wait, is that the right? Oh, they're all twos, okay. Let's see here, I guess I looked at the wrong line. Okay. It was the, oh, transportation, sorry, I had the wrong number. The first page is for a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And I'm just asking, is that an increase? Because I attended the California School Board Association Governance Annual Budget Meeting. And they specified that, which I wasn't aware of, all kids that are transported are not necessarily special education students. So if we have homeless students or I'm seeing, you know.
In our district, we do only have special education and then some field trips for different schools.
Okay.
This is an increase, if you look at the second line. That is an increase to the purchase order for transportation of some of our students.
However, we do provide any homeless student, as required by law, that needs transportation as well. Maybe not on our school buses, but alternative methods.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you. That was it for that one.
Okay, number Q is in quarter?
Yep, so this one is for Sandy Hook's Promise. I, I just wanted to address that, or just, I'm questioning, is this going to be a particular app that we're adding in regards to safety for the Sandy Hook's Promise?
Yes, it's an anonymous reporting system that we are looking with your approval, with the board's approval, to bring on board that will give access to middle and high school students to be able to anonymously report incidents that are dangerous or it could be anything, anywhere from a student that might be suicidal to they've seen something troubling on social media. And then that information goes to staff with Sandy Hook. And from there, those staff members will report to sites and APD. And I do want to recognize Scott Bergerhouse and Ana Castro. And then we also have Lieutenant Lieutenant Bittner from APD here this evening who have been working on putting this agreement together, it's a partnership with APD.
Okay, so in regards to safety, is the app, just it will be on the phone to upload for the parents or and the students?
I believe it's just for students.
Okay, all right, to anonymously?
Report any incident that they, that is concerning or they feel is threatening.
Okay, oh, you know, say that, yeah.
It'll actually be for students and staff.
Oh, it is students and staff?
And then we're training, training on March eighteenth.
Oh, March eighteen?
Secondary school site teams, as well as Lieutenant Bittner. And some of our dispatchers in the ANIAC Police Department. And then following that, in early April, we're planning on training students. Once the students are trained, the goal is that everyone will have the app on their phone. And it's a very quick process, they, if they see something on social media, so on and so forth, that's dangerous, affects the school site, or suicidal thoughts or anything like that. You go onto the app and it goes directly to the Sandy Hook and they respond to it within two minutes. And they will assess the crisis and notify ANIAC Police Department as well as the school. Or the ANIAC Police Department, the police department will respond and work with the administration.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to clarify, eventually, I guess we'll have to add this on the next agenda item for the meeting. For safety, I researched this site and we would need a still a comprehensive safety plan to focus on each site. So I guess that would have to be on the next agenda item.
And each site does have one, that's what we covered last Wednesday. But if the board wants it more in-depth for each site, that could certainly come under future agenda items.
Right, it would be more of a, like an analysis. Where we would see blueprints, like I think I stated before, for Deer Valley High School, ANIAC, where we can actually see the corridors and things like that. And it's a very extensive plan, not like we have before, yeah.
I'm sorry. I had, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I just want to thank everybody who worked on this item. I think that it's really important that we bring something like this to the district. And I hope that, you know, it'll, it'll do some good. But I also just wanted to give a shout out to Trustee Sawyer-White because she is the one that brought, at least to me, my attention to Sandy Hook Promise. And so I feel like, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that she brought that to my attention. But I also appreciate everybody who's worked to get this particular contract and the partnership with ANIAC Police Department as well. I think it's a step in the right direction, so, thank you.
Trustee Rocha?
No, I was just trying to understand the plan. You were saying each site would have a blueprint, like the corridors and all that? Is that something that's already, the staff would be doing already or they have? I mean, I'm trying to understand where we fit into the picture. Is it a report? I don't think that we need to be involved in it.
Again, I think we would get, we need to stay on topic with the app. And so if that's a future agenda item, I think it's certainly requested.
Apology.
And we'll put it on the board for an item for discussion.
Oh, okay, that makes better for me.
Okay, and, no other comments? Okay, we had someone who wants to speak to number?
Me, letter?
Ten G, well, ten, ten G. So let's go ahead and vote for everything, let's, if there's a motion, for everything with the revision for classified, excluding G as in goat. If there's a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items based on your description.
We have a motion?
Second.
Excuse me, is it, is, I think G is the classified report?
No, I think she wants. I think you want to do ten G, right? You want a consent item, right? Okay, so. Oh, I apologize, ten G was, my fault, okay, that's what I thought it was. So you want to speak on the Sandy Hill Promise?
Hook.
Sandy Hook, Ms. Hall, Alicia Hall? Sorry, I had you speaking about classified human resources report, apologies.
Well, I'm not going to be speaking on Sandy Hook.
Well, that's the item on the consent calendar.
Due to the fact that I don't want to stay too late for, I am.
Okay, but if it's not on the Sandy Hook, that's what we're on right now. What did you want to speak of, just out of curiosity?
Because I didn't know that when I first filled out my form, that I was, that I guess the community goes first, then it's the staff?
Public comments, yes.
So, yeah, and I was trying to speak and then she had told me that I couldn't because of that.
That's passed, sorry.
So I would have to wait to, Action Item Twenty-One?
Twenty-One is. No, we, we, okay, you can wait, yeah, twenty-one's good.
I have a suggestion.
Can we just finish this, this vote and then we'll do the suggestion?
I would like to hear what your suggestion is, thank you.
Is that okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, why don't we just vote on this and then we can make a motion to move the public comment?
That's what I was going to do, I apologize, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, so you can sit or stand, but you, you look comfortable standing, it'll be just a moment. So is there a motion to approve?
A motion, oh, he already.
Okay, you have a motion? A second, all those in favor?
Say aye.
All those opposed? Gary, he's a second. Okay, now we'd like to entertain a motion to move, because you don't want to stand, I appreciate that. Number twenty-one up to right now in front of Action Items.
I will make a motion to move Item Twenty-One Additional Comments, which exceeded the first thirty-minute session, up to number eleven.
Yeah, in front of number eleven.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes and welcome, Ms. Alicia Hall?
Ayesha.
Ayesha, sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's okay, I get that all the time. Well, I want to, first off, thank Ellie for the excellent job that she has been doing since I've been coming to these meetings. And Crystal also. I call them by their first, their first name because I respect them in that honor. Due to the fact that those who came here tonight try to disgrace them. Try to make it seem like they're the bad parties when they are the one that's looking out for our kids in their best interest, in their safety. And one of the women called, said that she act like she's superior. As a black woman who's an African-American descendant of slavery, I don't get that. And I call things how they are. Anybody who know me, no, I tell you what I believe and what I feel. And I don't get that from her. For someone to call her that, that must be who they are. Because they feel like they're much bigger than the whole issue that's going on in this, this meeting, the meetings that we had, where we requested for something to be done to help our kids, to make sure that they're safe. And then when we get to that meeting, it's not even about that. They want to talk about her grandstanding, she waited, she asked you, what did you have in plan? You didn't, so then she called for you to step down. She didn't do it at the beginning of the meeting, she didn't, I don't felt that she did out of malice. I felt like she did it because she felt like nothing is going to be done. It feels like to me that you're trying to, like my grandma would say, that you're trying to hide the left hand from the right hand. Like where's the money? Where is the, the thing that's supposed to be put in place to protect our kids? It's not there. And they say that, like, people show their emotions in different ways. I don't even think it's not even that, like I said the last meeting, it's a disconnect. It has not hit one of your kids. It has not happened to you. You don't know what it's like to grieve someone that you love that has been taken from, for some gun violence. To see someone hurt, to feel their hurt. And if someone is sitting up here and just trying to, and make it seem like she's the bad person because she's asking for accountability, to hold you to accountability? That's ludicrous. That doesn't make any, that, that sound like white supremacy to me. And I got thirty-five, thirty-four seconds left. Like I said, I want to thank you, I respect you. Thank you for bringing this to us and trying to make it safer for our kids. Because I have two kids that's coming up in this school district and I fear for them every day because I'm having issues with the school and my son's safety. They don't think it's, it's, it's serious that my son is being assaulted on campus. And you don't even tell me my son has, had got his nose kicked in the nose or got his lip, got slapped by a kid. You don't tell me these things, that's the disconnect. And you want to give walkie-talkies to one school, what about all the schools?
Thank you. Ms. Barra, have, do you want to give her your information? Okay, great, thank you very much. So we move on to, to number eleven. Action Items, California School Boards Association, CSBA Delegates Assembly Election. I'd like to start with, because we all know different people, is there anybody who wants, you can do a write-in? Anybody interested in a write-in?
A write-in?
Write-in, is anybody interested in putting a write-in on?
To add in?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Who's the name you want to put in?
myself.
Okay.
President Gibson-Greiff?
Yes, ma'am.
I was told by Ms. Cavalero that we didn't, that we don't usually do resumes because that's the reason why we held it off. So I just wanted to like have that be said in the meeting as well. Because you explained it to me, I'm kind of not fully remembering it right now, so.
Well, at the last board meeting, you had made a comment that we had included the resumes or the applications. It's not even resumes, it's actually their applications, which do have personal information on them. You stated that we have included those in the past. When I prepped this item, I checked everything in board docs and we had not included them in there before. But we did include it in the Friday packet to make sure board trustees had access to the information.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so I think, what I, I was, excuse me, Madam Chair, I just.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I remember when I was elected that this was considered like the resume. We didn't have any details, if that's what Board Trustee Householder, Householder, sorry. If that's what you meant, I mean, we didn't have any background at all, so at least they state the history of how long they've been on the board.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so this was what I wanted.
And I just missed, I was just saying it because I misstated.
Okay, I see.
For this to be pushed, and then Ms. Cavalero cleared that up for me.
Okay.
I just felt like I caused some confusion potentially, so thank you, Ms. Cavalero.
Well, in order to make it easy and that the board agrees, I thought we'd take these one at a time, we would vote. And if we get ties on people, we will revote, how's that?
Question?
Yes.
We can't, can we have two people from our district?
I don't think so. Yeah, but, yeah. I don't know, what are you saying, Trustee Rocha?
I think if you look at the ruling and it's, and it might be in that paper, Ellie, I mean, Ms. Householder, that you can only allow one person per board, school board.
And I believe that's what I recall. So is every, everybody agreed that we go one by one and we'll try for unanimous votes on these? And if we don't get them, if we don't get three, then we try again, how does that sound?
That's fine.
Okay, we will start with Maria Ramos. She's from John Swett Uni, uh, School District and she is the incumbent. Is there a motion? No motion, I'll make the motion, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Motion for Shane Reinhardt, John Swett U.S. School District? We have to vote for three folks. Okay, you don't have to. Yeah, you can, up for no more than three candidates. So we, I'll make the motion for Shane Reinhardt, John Swett Uni, School District, is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies. I will vote for Pruleen.
Rivera.
Rivera Alred, Liberty Union High School. There is a motion by Trustee Hack, second by Trustee Rocha, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes three, you. I didn't hear the ends, I'm sorry. You're okay?
Yes, I say aye.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't hearing anything. So the motion passes five-zero. We have a motion, we have Mary Rocha, ANIAC Unified School District, is there a motion? There's a motion by Trustee Hack.
Second.
Uh, there's a second by Mary Rocha, all those in favor say aye, I say aye.
Aye.
We have one no, two nos.
Two nos, three-two.
Okay, and since we can't have another one from the district, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say why, because I really believe in passing the baton to, like when I was on the school site council, I asked another parent when my term was up. And it's just, you know, I've been, I missed the ball on this one, but I've been addressing CSBA from the beginning since I was elected. And then all of a sudden, when Board Trustee Householder said, let's go for professional development, let's attend this and that, then everybody was on board. So I hope that this is going to be effective and then you can bring back some meaningful information.
Thank you very much. I have been a Delegate Assembly Person in the past, when I was here, back when I was a school board member. And I did move up to be a Director. I'm fully aware of CSBA's knowledge. I'm fully aware of CSBA's knowledge and background and, and their support for School Board members and I do believe in, uh, educating us at all times. So I will make every effort to bring back information if I am selected because it does go according to how many districts vote for you and you have to have a majority in order to be in that position.
And I'd like to thank you for your work with CSBA, both of you. Um, next we have, um, item eleven-B, twenty-nineteen to twenty, School Plan for Student Achievement, Associate Superintendent Barra.
So before you, you have, um, the School Plans for Student Achievement, and just as a reminder, you've al, these have already been approved, um, back in May of two thousand nineteen. They are only coming back before you because sites, these sites in particular had received some carryover Title I funds and so they had to account for those adjustments, amendments in their plan, so that's what's before you this evening.
Okay, um, ma'am chair. So, I, I just wanted to address that, I think we should address there is a conflict of interest for Antioch High School and I feel that the Board Trustee Mary Rocha, you cannot vote on this.
Excuse me, but I've been through, excuse me, but I've been through this before when I was on the Board and he, and my, uh, uh, son, who is now the Principal of Antioch High, was at Reach Project and was working for the district. And I was told at that time by the Attorney that separate households, separate incomes, that make, that does not make you a, a person that you have to decline in making your votes.
Well, I spoke to a policy analyst and they said that that has been happening for years, uh, a lot of nepotism, and I'm, I'm disvoicing that, you've been on the Board for a year and there's been other projects, Antioch High, and, and you haven't recluded yourself, so I just think you should consider that, um, if my son was on, uh, Principal, I would not vote on that item. And that's, I just wanna make that public announcement.
Well, that's nice for you to say, but at this point, I'm not gonna do that.
And just as a point of information, because I did a lot of art projects with the school district, did my role as the, um, Executive Director for the Arts and Culture, I didn't, um, recu- recuse myself, I just abstained it. And, um, it's, it's the individual choice, so.
President Gibson-Greiff?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, different topic, uh, so this is Ms. Barra, potentially even Mr. Cannon. Um, so with the carryover funds, can you just explain a little bit of how that works and how these, um, basically how this happened, like, does, do the carryover funds go back to, you know, the district and are they back redistributed, or can you just give me a little sense of how that works?
Yes, that's pretty much how that, that occurs.
Okay, yeah.
They, they kinda are pulled back and then, um, a percentage of that carryover returns to those sites.
And was there like an adjust, was there an adjust? I'm just trying to wrap my head around, 'cause I haven't seen this before with the adjustment, so I just wanna make sure I understand what's going on here. Does that make sense? Goes back, redistributed, but how did, how was there, is it carryover from last year?
Correct.
So that's just like on you, like, you know, you think a program costs ten thousand and ends up costing nine thousand, there's a thousand dollars of carryover, goes back into the fund, redistributed.
Correct.
Okay, awesome.
It, to the existing items already in place.
Correct, that's how they, yeah.
Yeah.
They just expand on what they currently are working with.
Of course, okay.
Okay.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a reminder too, that when school sites approve, um, school plans, they are basically, they're not approving the plan itself and whether they like the content, but whether or not they are, they are asserting that the school is not supplanting Title I funding.
Yeah.
And we've had staff review all of the plans multiple times and, um, there's no supplanting, so we would ask that you would approve them.
And with that, we do have a public comment, speaker card, Mr. Willie Mims, and I didn't have anywhere to put you in front of behind, so.
Uh, basically, you know, listen to the discussion about conflict. Uh, you know, the law states that, um, it doesn't necessarily have to be a conflict to be a conflict. It's the appearance of a conflict that makes it a conflict. So just the appearance, it just don't have to be a fact that is a conflict, it's the appearance. Uh, the, um, um, so, we talked about the carryover, how much is carried over? They don't, there's no statement here about how much is carried over from all these schools. And if, and if too much is being carried, if, if a lot is being carried over, well, maybe some of these schools don't need that much money in the first place. The, so, my concern is that, you know, I, I picked up two schools, and that's Antioch High School and Antioch Middle, and I looked at their school site plans and, uh, you know, I'm not sure if I saw anything that dealt with the, uh, addressing the African-American subgroup in, in terms of their test scores and, and in terms of English, language, and math test scores. I had, uh, for, for Antioch High School, I, the overall reading, but how, how well the students understand stories and information that they read, ninety-two percent did not, of the African-American subgroup who took that test last year, did not understand what they read. Now, these students who took that test last year were eleventh grade, they're in the twelfth grade this year. So, you had ninety-two percent. And the other part, it says, "How well do students communicate in writing?" Ninety-six percent did not meet the state standards. So we got a problem here. Uh, listening, how well the students understand spoken information, ninety-six percent did not understand spoken, I mean, uh, did not meet the state requirements in terms of understanding spoken, spoken information. In the, uh, res- research and inquiry, how well the students, how well can students find and present information? Ninety-four percent did not meet the state standards. In the, in the math portion, the, uh, concepts and procedures, how well the students use mathematical rules? Ninety-eight percent did not meet the state standards. Problem solving, how well the students show and apply their problem-solving skills? Ninety-eight percent of the students did not meet the state standards. Communicating, communication and reasoning, how well the students, how well can students think logically and express their thoughts in order to solve a problem? One hundred percent of the African-American subgroup did not meet the state standards. And I'm looking at the, uh, the school site plan, nothing in that school site plan is addressing Antioch High School's problematic area. So the school site plan is flawed because they're saying that they don't ha, they don't have this problem and yet the state test scores say you got a major problem with the African-American subgroup in, uh, Antioch Middle, I'll get them the next time.
Thank you. And then, can you tell us, and where, does it say in the program, oh, I'm sorry, for Ms. Barra, can, does it say in the program, um, does it say how much is carryover, or is, I didn't? Okay. Because I'm curious at this point. Okay. No, it didn't disappear. Yeah, I'm just curious, where does it say, or is it all the money?
Uh, in the version that you have in front is the actual school plan for student achievement, so within there, it's already embedded in the change, so in the last document, it looks at that. I can provide that information as, as necessary, we do have that, it just didn't go into the script plan.
It would be nice to know the Friday Board Report if we agree, I think it's a, a nice. Well, then you can read, if we could get in the Friday Board Pic, you could read it. So, is that something that's easy to get to?
Yes.
Okay.
President Gibson-Greiff?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, another thing too, very related to that, is, so I'm assuming that the school site councils, they, um, they're made aware of this carryover and then do they have a discussion about what that money is supplanted into, or is it kind of just evenly, um, you know, like across? 'Cause I see some round numbers, some where it's like, you know, eighty doll, you know, eighty-eight. I'm just wondering, does the school site council, um, have a say in where that goes?
Absolutely.
What the carryover?
So, i- it is required, so anyone that, that accepts Title I money, and all of our schools are school-wide programs, which means that they're required to have a school plan for student achievement that includes a comprehensive needs assessment that gets there, and they're required to annually review and update that document. So part of that annual review and update is generally a carryover fund, which generally happens in the fall, but just because of how we were dealing with financial situations, we were very cautious about what we did with carryover money, and so when we did authorize this amount to the school sites, they, and that's what's taken so long, have had to go through a process of meeting with their school site council, developing it, proposing what those amendments are, then the school site council as a group collectively votes yea or nay based on this, so it is a very democratic, very, um, it, it functions as an extension of what the law says we must do for school site funds.
And then a follow-up to that, that's okay?
Yes.
Um, would it be possible, um, if, if the Board agrees, number one, to get that, um, what the change was, which you said it would be easy to get, and then also maybe the minutes of the approval of where that went for each one of the school sites, obviously it's gonna be kind of a big document, so I'm sure Kelly can attach it, would it be possible to get those minutes?
I can tell you what we do. Um, so, in order for the sites to go through this process, we require them to give us their agenda and the notes from the meeting, based on the agenda and the notes from the meeting, when they are shown to be approved by the school site council, that triggers the process by which we give to fiscal services. Fiscal services then will make that change into our newness financial system and that kind of completes the circle of, of how we go through this, so all of that documentation is kept and is required to be kept at Title I sites for five years.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I guess the reason I'm asking is 'cause I feel like those two pieces of information will at least provide me a better understanding of, okay, uh, you know, XYZ school gets five thousand extra, you know, it's, it's amended, but just to kind of see how the school sites are determining what programs to supplement, I think would be really helpful, um, for me, so.
So let me also make sure that you understand, they don't, we did not allocate money that they didn't have the previous year. This is simply money that they had left over, again, as you mentioned. So this is money that was already allocated to, in this case, Antioch High School or Antioch Middle School students, but yet it is being used in the following year for the next year's group, so I make sure that's points clear.
I, exactly, I hundred percent understand that, but with that carryover, it could potent, so say, you know, 'cause one of the things I see is laptops, right? And so, you know, they, they bought the laptops last year, they saved a little bit of money. Obviously, the next year, they're not gonna need to buy laptops, it'll probably go somewhere else, and so that's that kind of change that I wanna see. But yeah, you're right, I mean, I think that that, I completely agree, thank you for that clarification, that this was money that was already allocated, but since it's going back to them, I just wanna see where they're then putting that in their, in their plan. So through the, the minutes and the, and the agenda, it seems.
Okay. Ma'am.
Would that be you?
Chair. Yeah, so, I was on the school site council, I think, good three and a half years, so I just want clarification. The, all the notes and the agenda is submitted to, I'm sorry, which department?
Um, so that actually comes to me.
Yeah.
So we ask that they send it to my admin assistant
and we collect all that information. And we, the Board is not privy to the minutes and the agenda, 'cause I've never seen them since I've been on?
No, they're, they're public documents.
Okay.
Don't know if the Board has ever asked or if we've ever submitted, I'm not sure about that process. I can tell you that they are public documents because they are governed by law, they are part of the school site council, which is a public meeting, so all of that information we do have and we do collect.
Okay, because, um, my first year on school site council, that particular principal asked, she said, weren't, weren't you able to look at, on your first year on the Board, to view our school site council? And I said, "I've never s, I've never seen them." So, the Board has never been?
Well, we haven't asked for them.
The school site council?
We haven't asked for their minutes, no.
No, not the minutes, I mean, the far as the actual cost is allocated for each school site, I, I've never.
Well, that would be.
Seen ever before.
That is the school plan that is submitted, so it does go through and allocate, and, and align to the LCAP, it shows the different goals the school has and it, um, distributes it through different strategies and then we get into even more details about object codes, we know, personnel versus non-personnel.
Right, but I'm in an actual school site council, just a brief, not the whole, the LCAP allocation, I just, exactly, where the library books are going, we ordered new library books. There's, there's a small report of, there are meetings, um, which are only like every three months. We never receive like a school site council from Diva Vista, from, it's just, uh, this, this school of success, student of success, that's, that, that's the school site council and the LCAP incorporated in one.
Uh, yes, I, I guess I'm having a hard time being able to respond to it. We have different documents, we have summary documents, we have full plans, we have notes, we, we, there's a lot of things that go into and what we collect. Um, so depending on the will of the Board and under direction, I can provide whatever documents are required that are public and, and are available.
Okay, so, what, what, um, I, I think I forgot to mention, um, some teachers are just really kind of disheartened about the library situation, so, I mean, if I, you're ordering, uh, somewhere ordering more library books and we don't have a library tech, um, I'm just curious, do you list that, those costs, as far as if you're laying off the librarian at that school site?
So, um, my role is not to do reductions, that's the thing I let seniors staff discuss. I can tell you that within the LCAP, we do have library media techs and we know those at various sites.
Yes.
Um, additionally with that, we gave sites a thousand dollars in their site budget allocated towards library circulation to help restore and to renew some of the circulation issues. Sometimes elementary kids especially get stains and rips and tears to books, so we routinely try to replace those. Um, the media techs at those sites are responsible for those order lists, so they survey interests of students and of teachers and they're, and they're refurbishing the library and adding to the circulation. Additionally, we gave another thousand dollars, um, per school site, I think it was, we didn't do prospects, so maybe twenty-three thousand dollars of LCAP money that can be used at all libraries, but we essentially gave them each site another thousand dollars, so, um, I believe we're probably at about seventy-five percent of those sites have fully utilized their two-thousand-dollar, um, funds in order to go back towards replacing and using books. So, at this point in time, we do fund our, our libraries, we have our media technicians at each of our, our school sites and we do provide, although not as much as we want to, we do provide them funds to be able to support, um, the library efforts.
And are those funds reflected in these plans, I guess?
They are, so each of the school plans, so Antioch High School and Antioch Middle School, if you look on the summary sheet, you should see in a line item that says either one thousand or two thousand dollars of that, one is from, one thousand is from LCAP, one thousand is in their site plan.
Okay, but, uh, Black Diamond does not have a library tech and neither does, uh, Marsh, that's my understanding.
Yes, they do have halftime.
Oh, halftime?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so these plans that, they're just, some of them.
They're part-time.
Progressionary.
Mm-hmm.
And so they can choose to use some of these fundings if they think that's a priority, they can choose, you'll see it in the plan, another halftime to supplement the base.
So these plans have been developed by the sites based on the need.
And approved by the school site.
And that's right.
Yeah, it's already been.
And our goal tonight is to do what, approve those plans.
Well, to assert that.
It's already been approved.
The planting.
Yeah.
Right.
So we're required to bring it in front of the Board and the Board is to bring up any type of concerns that may be with and address them specifically and we can bring it back to the site.
If the Board, um, by ed code, if the Board did not approve the plans, they would have to submit their reasons in writing back to the school site, that they have an opportunity to revise the plan.
Yeah. And, and I'll just explain a little bit more detail about my role, so my role is really a lot of compliance, um, to make sure that I educate them on what the rules and the laws and provisions are to go through that, help them through the, the process and facilitate that, answer questions, uh, be available to do one-on-one meetings, group meetings, in fact, we're actually engaged in that process now for next year's school plans, um, and just to be right, a general assistant. So, um, we wanna make sure that, that people are getting what they need as best as we possible, understanding that we have limited resources and at the same time, understanding the rules, 'cause people don't wanna knowingly do what's wrong, they need help and support to make sure that they're meeting all those needs, because the last thing we wanna do in tough times is to have to pay back funds for misuse, so that's where we really focus here, is education with our, with our site, not just our site leaders, but with our school site councils as well and giving them ample information on how to proceed through this whole process.
So, with that, I would like, we had a member of the public ask for the, the funds, I would like a simple spreadsheet and then I would suggest that anybody has further questions to make an appointment through the superintendent with Mr. Cannon.
Uh, President Gibson-Greiff?
Yes.
Um, with the minutes though, would that be if, if folks are, um, it's the will of the Board to just get those in a Friday Board Update, just 'cause I just don't wanna go to all the individual schools?
Well, there's only so many listed and I, it's work, if, if you feel that it wouldn't take too much work, um, I'm asking Mr. Cannon.
I serve at the pleasure of the Board and the superintendent, so I will do as directed.
Me personally, I'm fine with just the, what, what do you?
I'm fine too, um, I was thinking if you needed, uh, information about, maybe you could make an appointment and then you could review all of this.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm in agreement as well, 'cause I used to be on the school site council and, it, yeah, it could, it doesn't have to go back three, four years, um, because again, I'm hearing the libraries are closed, so, and, you know, they, the students can't go in the library before even eight o'clock.
Make it easy, just the minutes only, if that's not a problem.
Yeah.
I would say any school that you have any concerns with at any time, feel free to contact us and we will provide that for you because it is a public document and the public has a right to inspect it at any time.
All right.
So, um, always feel free.
So, do you have an interest in all of these or just a specific?
Yeah, you can email specific schools.
Yeah, it was Black Diamond and Marsh.
Right, so rather than go through all of them.
The libraries open, that's what I'm concerned with.
That's what I'm trying to avoid, yeah. So with that, we're in agreement, we will get the spreadsheet with the.
Okay, that'll be great.[1793.59]
And then you guys will let her, the superintendent know, thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
And with that, since we have no speaker cards, cards, do we have a motion? Oh, nope, you, yeah, she did turn it in. You're, I'm doing to you like I do to Mr. Memes, Julia, I'm sorry.
I understand, into a traumatic, uh, event, and we were still affected, we can't think clear, I, I honestly, I can't think clear. But, um, this is my opinion about, um, eleven B, yeah? As a di- and then thank you again for your attention. As a district, we have the choice and option to stop the standardized testing and the overtesting of students, plus the Common Core program. These tests, meaning the standardized tests, are working against a goal of engaging the students of learning more and better by fewer tests, because the tests have an, have indicated to us that the students are underperforming, and as Mr. Memes indicated, the test results for students of color is even lower. Let me remind you that most school districts in the country are getting rid of the fraudulent standardized testing. So we must understand that testing shouldn't be used as indicator of how much the student has learned. Basically, put, we must get even, get rid of that Common Core program, and offer the students engaging, simple, interesting lessons provided personally by teachers, not programs, not, uh, AI readers. Also, instead of standardizing all the students, we must let the student tell us, or let the teachers find out. What are the teachers, what are the students good at? And what are they interested in learning? What individual potentials they want to develop? Or what they want to do with their lives after high school? Or, so, if we get rid of the standardized testings and Common Core programs, then we'll have a lot of money, a lot of funding, to better serve and individualize every student's learning, because we shouldn't make our children do and think in the same manner as though they were, they are AIs, robots. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, is there a motion to approve, uh, action item number B?
Motion.
Motion by, um, Trustee Hack?
Second. Oops, that's right.
Second by Trustee Sawyer White, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion passes five zero. We have nothing, uh, item number twelve, information discussion on items requested by the board. Board self-evoi- s- s- board self-evaluation.
Yes, so I have brought back information from CSBA, uh, which the board asked me to contact. The cost is twenty-seven hundred dollars for the training. Uh, the length is six hours, but it can be shortened to four hours, they said they won't do any less than that. And it beca- it can be done to back, at back-to-back meetings, but they really suggest it's done in one meeting. Um, so I need to know from the board, now that you have this information, if that, you would still like us to move forward.
And is this the equity training?
It is the self-evaluation survey in order to move on to board goals.
Oh, I thought it was my understanding was equity.
Uh, it was not the request, I think.
Uh, no, I mean, it suggested the training that board, uh, Trustee Rocha and I attended. But, um, if you could check into that, I'm more, that, that's about self-evaluation and, and addressing explicit bias and some other issues, so that we can be more cohesive.
Is that through CSBA?
Yes, it is, it's called equity training.
Well, as far as a board evaluation, I don't think it's appropriate at this time, we have things to work on, and I would like to do it in one more, more respectful place, place, and not spend the money right now, so, that's my personal opinion.
President Gibson Gray?
Yes.
Um, the way I see it is, it does sound like a kind of a, a lofty price. Um, but I think that, I mean, if we don't do this, we still need to get to a point where we make goals, we don't necessarily have to go through CSBA. But it's my understanding that, you know, each one of us as board members gets three thousand dollars in professional development, doesn't mean we have to spend it. But, um, you know, I think that professional development for all five of us, I mean, the community has been calling on us to be more cohesive and to, and to move forward together, and I, if this is a step in that process, I think that, you know, I, I think that it would be a worthwhile experience, um, but if we don't end up going this way, I still think that we need to go, um, and go forward with goals. And it was my understanding that that was, everybody was in agreement of that.
Yes, because initially I thought, um, you know, these last few board meetings have been combative, and Stephanie kind of was like, looking at us, and, you know, we're both saying, well, maybe we need to last time, I thought it was pretty effective, they asked us, why did you even become a board member? Why did you become a superintendent? And we were able to find out, you know, maybe Stephanie had taught here for twenty-four years, but I found out more in, information about her, her passion for education. And we can't continue to be combative and, um, not on the same page. Um, you know, staff members are coming up here, it's, it's just not a good place. Um, I get stressed out, I don't sometimes eat dinner to come to these board meetings, the same thing for the last three years. And, um, study sessions, Pittsburgh Unified School District has study sessions, um, they're attending these conferences with their superintendent. I go to these conferences, and we're not attending together. We're not attending any of these educational trainings or anything, we're separate. So I'm, I, I'm on board with a study session. I mean, to even, to get on board with the superintendent, I think is, is crucial.
Any other comments?
Um, I've taken the training with, uh,
For board evaluation?
Board, board evaluation. Member, uh, trustee, I mean, trustee Sawyer White, I took that, uh, and I did enjoy it. And civility was a real important one, respect was another one, and I think those items are very important to us in order for us to work together. I had hoped that we could get somebody to come in and just give us an opportunity to feel and share how we are performing, and how we can do a better job with each other, so we can go forward. We're so split at this point, that I don't think we can do any good for anybody. So I don't know where we can get a person that can do facilitation, not at that price.
Well, it's, it's a self-respect that I'm, it's, it's getting along, that I'm more, that's my biggest concern. What was the training that you had?
We had training with De- Deb, and you were here.
No, but you said there was a different training that you wanted to
Right, there's a, a new director of training, um, which is Darcelle West.
But what was the training that you had?
This is for governance training.
No, but what was the, the
Oh, equity, she addressed, addressed equity, but then self
That's what I think we need.
Okay.
First, and then maybe we can move on to board evaluations, I just think we need to, and I'm, I'm trying, I'm like you, I have a pit in my stomach, and I would like to try that before I head on to board evaluations, that's my personal opinion, but it's the will of the board.
Uh, we, sometime, I, I, I think it's similar, if maybe if you want to check, equity training is equity among each board trustees, because I asked them. And she spoke to me, she pulled me aside, because she, she, to be honest with you, this particular director of CSBA, she's very aware of the shooting. She's, and she said, this is what you need.
Okay.
Yes, equity training.
So, anybody else
I'm open to any training.
Prefer to go to that, have that come?
Yeah, they could come to us, I think it's worth twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Huh?
It's worth twenty-seven, they come to us, it's a study session.
It's this, this topic here, I don't think it would be
Oh, okay, equity training.
Yes, and I would like to find a way to be respectful to everybody and do our jobs in public. We don't have to love each other, we just have to do our jobs. So, is that the will of the board?
Yes, and it's focusing on the students as well.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll bring back information on equity training.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, resolutions for fish, first reading none, resolutions for immediate action, none. Resolutions for second reading and action, none. Board policies for first reading and action, none. Number seventeen, board policies for second reading and action. We've already had these materials in front of us, is there any comments on them?
Yes, uh, the, um, Madam Chair, the revisions, are we discussing this, this is in red?
We can't, yes, that's what we're doing.
Right, okay, so I compared some other districts, um, uh, they don't, they really, we really can, it reflects the uh, district's vision and goals, but it's really, um, so I'm gonna give you an example. Just governing board meeting agendas shall state the meeting state and time, it's not really reflecting the district of the board. And then the only issue I have is, in the bottom of the gamut, which is the foundation of CSBA for the policies and the board bylaws, is to give a week's notice. I'm not, uh, that, that seemed to change when I was first elected, I have to give a two-week notice if I would like to request something. It's just a copy-paste procedure, if it's just a couple lines. Um, it says, and if, if my agenda items are not on the, uh, agenda, if we could please postpone it for the next automatically. Um, it's to allow significant, this is at the bottom, time for consideration and research of the issue. It seems like, you know, last year was a little, it was a struggle, I asked for Sandy Hook's promise seven times. Um, because I, I think I addressed, I was concerned that we need to act a shoot of training. So, um, if we could revise that, uh, a week's notice, and then automatically, the agenda is the item for the next board meeting.
Who, who puts these together?
We do.
We, it, any comments on that? Because I don't recall.
It's, well, I, I don't think it harms us to put within two weeks, doesn't mean we can't put it down within the week, it's just sometimes there's a lot of other items on the agenda, there's
And that's why we started the list, I think what you're talking about is items with more urgency?
Yes.
Okay, but how do we define that? Do, do we have to finish this tonight? Do we have to, is there a time deadline for this at all?
No, a third reading.
You can send your suggestions into the superintendent, and we can do it again, always, if you can, send suggestions in, in advance, and we will be prepared to address them. So for this, let's just, let's vote to table it?
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
Second.
Wait, wait.
Tell me first.
Wait, table to a date certain, do you mind a date certain?
Uh, no, I don't mind.
March eleventh?
That's fine.
Is the motion to
First.
For March eleventh, is there a second? There's a motion and a second, we will table this to March second, March eleventh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five zero. There's no, in, information anticipation of future action, anyone?
Uh, future items of the agenda?
Information anticipate a few, for future action, usually comes from the superintendent. Uh, information items for general information, then, future agenda items from board members.
Okay, Madam Chair, um, I want to address, uh, safety, again. Um, I spoke to a board member in Southern California, there was a shooting, I think I mentioned that, and that's why I was concerned about presenting Sandy Hook's promise.
Should be really respectful.
Okay, sorry, yeah, so the point is, is this, yeah, the safety comprehensive, it's a, um, a gap analysis, and we'll address again, more in detail of Deer Valley's, um, pursuit and as far as Antioch, and the protocols, fifty-one thirty-seven, which is the school climate. Um, we need to revise that if there's a death of a student.
So
Add those to a future agenda, for discussion by the boards, we can figure out.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to, uh, point of order, remind board members that when they state that the public's not here knowing that you're going to talk about that, so in order to avoid any sort of, um, conflict of sharing your opinion with everyone on the board, just say what the item is, and then we'll discuss it at our next meeting.
And my apologies, um, the later it gets, the less I'm on topic, so, yeah, she is exactly right, so, thank you, it's, will be discussed at the next meeting. Reports from board members, I'll start to, all right, with, um, Trustee Sawyer White.
Okay, yes, I had a busy week. Um, I attended a webinar, the California Department of Education, that was nice from my house. Um, again, I want to address, uh, recruiting teachers of color, primary African-American, like Mr. Man addressed. So they suggested that, um, we, um, would prepare and, um, more of a shadowing co-teaching, uh, program. I used to be a co-teacher at Fairfield Unified, um, and there are grants out there called the Teacher Residency Grant Program, which is a hundred and twenty-five million dollars to help recruit ki- uh, students, I'm sorry, teachers of color. Um, and also I attended a African-American parent meeting where they, they are concerned in retaining and, um, recruiting, uh, teachers, counselors, um, I, and mental health specialists, social workers, which again, for our district, I think we should address that, um, for our high school students.
Thank you.
That's it.
Uh, Trustee Hack?
Uh, a lot of things, but the one that, that I would, um, mention is that the community chairs meeting we had at Deer Valley High School, uh, regarding the young man who was, Jonathan. Uh, it was, uh, three different groups, David Neal, who was here earlier, was one of the leaders, um, Deb Hubbard, yeah, and the other one, Becky Barnett, was the other one. And, um, it was good, it was very nice, I mean, there was a lot of emotions there, Christine was there. And a lot of emotions and whatever, and they're, at least at that moment in time, they're trying to figure out a way to do it during the day when the kids can go to it, because there was very few students there, it was all adults. And, uh, it was, uh, emotional, fairly raw, yeah, it was good though.
Thank you very much. Trustee Rocha?
Are we still on the, on the future, I mean, item?
Uh, no, reports from, oh, I'm sorry, did you have, we'll go back.
Can you, uh, it just dawned on me that we talk about counselors, and I know
Again, future items, we have to keep it
So I'd like to see if we could have a report on the counselors, how many we have, um, uh, what's their specific background? Are they credentialed in counseling?
Yeah, um, we're gonna, future agenda items, we'll talk about it, right? Or do you want a Friday board packet?
Well, I'll add it to the agenda and the board's
Thank you very much. Um, now, um, Trustee Rocha, you're next for, um, reports from board members.
Out and about.
Out and about, we should just read them, but out and about.
I would just say, how many of us are doing Cat in the Hat?
I'm reading, but I'm not reading Cat in the Hat.
Am I doing Cat in the Hat? Any of the other members doing Cat in the Hat?
You mean Cat in the Hat program?
Read Across America.
Yes, I'm familiar with it, I'm familiar with it.
Are you reading? Attending, any of the schools?
Uh, no, not, I'm a thirteen-year-old, not
Because they're asking us to come and read.
Any of you are interested, I mean, I
Yeah, but they ju- I'm just gonna do my favorite book.
I sent a note, note, I'm saying, I can't do it.
Okay.
Okay, you can come and see me at Turner, I'm doing Cat in the Hat outfit, and gi- and Women's Club is giving away all Dr. Seuss books to all three first grade classes, and, and books to all kindergartners.
And what did you do besides that in the last two weeks?
Oh, I think I've taken it easy.
Okay, cool, oh, that's right, you had a, Trustee, uh, Householder?
Um, today, I attended Jonathan Parker's funeral. Um, fortunately, I was the, according to the family, the only person from the district to show up. Um, and I will say that it's probably one of the most difficult things I've ever experienced in my life, to hear a mother cry like that is something I don't wish on any, anybody, and, um, you know, I just wanted to share out that I went to that, and, um, and you know, if, if anybody district or otherwise hasn't reached out to the family, I think in the next couple days, weeks, and months, it's gonna be really important to, you know, kind of check in with them, so, yeah, that's what I spent my day doing.
Uh, I forgot to mention, I did attend the wake, it just was very heart-wrenching, and I gave him some flowers.
Thank you both for that, and I, I will, um, I did stuff, but I'm tired and I want to go home. So future meetings are, where are future meeting information, March eleventh? And, uh, with that, I would like a motion for chairman. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.